That.
No.
I was just gonna tell you that.
I never.
Like she's here.
I like it hot outside and cold inside.
That's.
You're right.
Nothing, nothing, no.
That's.
What?
You read it there.
Yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
It was only one hundred and twenty-four pages.
Shame on you, John. Shame on you. No, there are some things I think are the next thing, but. But I don't want to.
Last call is coming.
All right, we'll be ready in a minute.
Yes. Bro, bro, it's not. Well. Cross.
Of course. We don't even know what it is.
I know what it is.
If you want to keep them now, New York City.
Hey, John.
Good thanks.
I'm. We're gonna get started now. All right, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the March fourth. Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Our first. Uh. Matter on our agenda is a presentation from Upper Bucks Regional EMS. So, welcome, Ubremz. The floor is yours.
Welcome, Alfred.
And just so that you know, we do have some people joining us remotely. This meeting is recorded, so in order for you to be heard. It, you'll need to be on that microphone. And if you, I don't want you standing behind the monitor. So maybe we could move the mic towards Scott, and then you could stand on the end. And what are we doing with the monitor?
Um, we have that there in case you wanted to see specific numbers and things like that.
Okay.
Where we, we have a presentation, but we didn't want to use up the board's. Time too much if you don't want to see it. It's, it's kind of a regurgitation of the. Jan- uh, January thirtieth presentation.
Okay.
Uh, but we do have it queued up in case you wanted that.
Great.
Go. So, thank you very much for having us. Thank you for allowing me the time to present.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my, uh, goal here is to, uh, go over some high-level items. Uh, give you data, and then open it up for your questions, because I understand that the, the board had several questions for us. So I'm gonna try to not monopolize time with pontificating. Um. First off, uh, our January numbers for Tinnicum. And again, as in an email I'd sent to the board, you realize that. We do not receive data until the sixth or so from the county. So unfortunately, because your meetings are so early, your official numbers are gonna lag. Um, but so we have our January numbers. In January, in Tinnicum, we were dispatched, uh, twelve times. And we transported ten times. That is during the entire month. On the six PM to six AM, we were dispatched once and we transported once. Uh, average response time was fourteen minutes to Tinnicum. Uh.
But during the month of January, how many days? You're saying one forty-one, so the Springfield Station responded once and transported once?
No, one forty-two. No, one forty-two was one of the days we were open due to, due to the weather. We, we had remained open. When there was inclement weather, we opened up one forty-two to give the best coverage we can.
Okay.
All of those, all of those numbers were from one forty-two. Um. Little background, uh, I officially joined the Ubremz Board in April of twenty-two. Um, the board, as you know, is comprised of representatives from each municipality. Uh, those representatives are appointed by the municipality and presented to our board for review and approval. And Tinnicum has two members on our board currently.
How long are those terms?
One year.
When are those appointments made?
They serve at the pleasure of the Boards of Supervisors.
Okay.
Uh, when it work all volumes, one month lag. Um. We recently had a very good, uh, event with Kimberton Whole Foods where they did a roundup for us. So you had the opportunity to round up. Uh, and then Kimberton matched that roundup. So in the month of February, Kimberton's efforts, uh, raised sixty-five hundred dollars. For Ubremz. So we thank them very much for that. Uh, subscriptions, uh, we are making a new list. Uh, we have been working diligently on that. We are also making a new database, making a new tool, making a new website, so that it is much more user-friendly, much more. Uh, available to the public, much more available to our billing system. Uh, we anticipate that being completed in April with the mailing going out in that same month. Um, we have, uh, improved operations. Uh, we have reduced the losses that we are sustaining each month. By improving operations, reducing overtime, being more efficient, um. Of course, into that comes that one forty-two is down.
Yeah.
Um, but that is not the entirety of it. There are, there are operational improvements there. Uh, community outreach, we are doing Board of Supervisors meetings. We've been at Regalsville, Bridgeton, Durham. We're doing a Haycock Town Hall at the end of the month, the twenty-seventh, I believe, and the twenty-ninth. Uh, they've invited us to present at their town hall. We'll be doing that. Uh, we met at Lion, we met the Lions Club, did a presentation with them. Uh, we are also, we were also at the Pecado meeting. Uh, we were invited by Springfield and we went down there, uh, and took part in that. Uh, as we had discussed previously. Uh, we were relying on a, a grant to come in so that we could get one forty-two back up and running. Uh, that grant is just about done. We anticipate having those funds and the ability to open up one forty-two in April. Uh, that is our goal. Right now, it's. With what's going on in Washington, there's a little bit of a delay, uh, but, uh, that's our goal. Our goal is to open up one forty-two for the remainder of, uh, twenty-five, twenty-four, seven.
So you're thinking of doing that with all grant money?
We needed the grant money.
At one point in time, you were talking about a bridge loan?
That part, that part is contingent on something else I'll get to, but that is contingent upon. The municipalities all agreeing on a model, committing to the model. And then, once we know that that will be in place, we will then apply for, get a bridge loan. And that will carry us into twenty-six, but that is completely contingent upon that. Okay. We are not, we are not going to apply for loaned money to continue operations towards, uh, bad, a bad end.
What's the amount of the grant?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And what is the funding source?
The, um. Economic development.
At the state level?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, we've met with, and sorry, one, going back one, uh, as I've. Said before, our normal meeting cadence was once a month. We are now doing twice a month meetings. The second meeting every month is purely a task-based meeting. So we're doing our normal business meeting once a month, and then every, not every other week, but. Once a month, we're also doing just a strictly task-based. And again, we have a task list for the assigned people, assigned due dates, expected outcomes, and we're holding each other accountable for those. Uh, we've met with one twenty-four and Central Bucks. Uh, their leadership to go over, um, shared resources, shared, shared trials, tribulations, Chuck from.
Can you, can you identify for the, the people here what one twenty-four is? They may not know.
One twenty-four, Barb, what's?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. They've been very forthcoming, very helpful, um. And we're, have a really good relationship going with them. Uh, I also understand that we've, we've come into a joint agreement with the fire departments in our area regarding treatment of firefighters on scene. Uh, there was a little disconnect there. I believe we've come to an official agreement on that about how that will be handled with them, so there's no more. Confusion about how that will be taken care of.
When you say treatment, what kind of treatment are you?
Well, if, if they require our services.
Okay.
If they require the, the Upper Bucks EMS services.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there was a lot of different gentlemen's handshake agreements that some people misinterpreted. Now there's like an official agreement, so, so there will be any more, um, friction in that area, because there had been previous to this.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Billy, not, not, yeah, not providing.
I, I appreciate the comments from the audience, but no one joining remotely can hear what you're saying.
So again, that, that topic is strictly, that topic is strictly on billing, clearly not providing the service, but the billing for the services.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, we're working well on donations. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, cash donations coming in. We also have a lot of in-kind donations coming in that are helping reduce our operational expenses. Uh, and as we've said, um, and I think you all may be. Getting tired of my emails, but we are improving our communications. One of the, one of the challenges that we had faced in the past was not communicating well with the, with the various municipalities. Um, I am making every effort to be as transparent as possible, to keep relevant communications coming your way, um, to keep that channel open. Um, and as per the last communication, um, regarding what is Ubremz looking for right now? Uh, what we're looking for right now is. A commitment to a model from each of the municipalities at the appropriate funding level for that model. And we're looking for a commitment, we're looking for a. An agreement, a letter, a, a, a meeting note, whatever, so that we know where we stand, so that we can apply for that bridge loan. So that we can continue to prove ourselves, so that we can. Do what we say we're going to do. And again, this wouldn't be non-binding, right? If we don't do what we say we're gonna do, it's non-binding. If the numbers change, it's non-binding. We're not looking for a hard, fast, you know, law resolution. You all know as well as I do that you wouldn't be doing your budget till, till towards the end of the year, which is when. The changes that we're asking for would come into effect. And at any point in time during there, if anything germanely changes, if we don't live up to our end, if anything, anything happens. You know, we're not looking for a binding agreement. We're just looking for an understanding from all the municipalities, so that we can make a best plan going forward. That's my update.
Okay, so can you elaborate on the model that you are seeking municipalities to commit to?
Sure. So, and I know you know this, but I'm saying it for everybody. Uh, Ubremz operates, uh, two stations currently. Two stations cover a hundred and twelve square miles. We cover approximately seventeen thousand eight hundred people. That translates into about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred calls a year, and that translates into about eleven hundred transports per year. The economics of that does not support two stations. The economics of that barely supports one station. Meaning the getting, the, the monies that we get for doing that job. Um, don't cover operational expenses. Our operational expenses are approximately eighty-three percent employee expenses. Uh, our budget is about one point seven million dollars. About one point four five of that is payroll, taxes, insurance, you know. Everything associated with the employees. So there's about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars that is outside of that. That's. Um. Fuel, insurance, uh, heat, air conditioning, you know, internet service, training, all that other good stuff. That, that all falls into that. So what we are, when we did our budget, the reality is, is that for two stations, Ubremz is coming up short about seven hundred thousand dollars per year. What we are asking the municipalities for is a prorated share of that shortfall based on their population. Our calculations came out to thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents per capita is what the total contribution we need is. Most municipalities, well, all municipalities are already giving a portion of that. Right? So that's not in addition to what is currently being given. That is, that is the sum total per capita. The way we figured out each municipality's expected share is we took. Certain municipalities, we have their entirety, so that's easy. We can just take their entire population. Other municipalities, we have a portion. We could not go lot by lot and figure that out. So what we figured out was, is we took the total landmass of a given municipality. The portion that we control to give it, or that we're responsible for that gives a percentage. We then went to the census, got the municipality's latest census numbers, took that percentage, multiplied it by the total population. And that gave us an estimate of the population that we serve in a given municipality.
What percentage of Tinnicum do you, are you first response for?
Tinnicum, we are. Area covered by Ubremz seventy, just under seventy-two percent. Seventy-one point eight seven percent, to be exact. According to our numbers, Tinnicum is thirty square miles. We cover twenty, thirty point one square miles. We cover twenty-one point six three square miles. Uh, the census data said thirty-eight eighteen, uh, and seventy-one point eight seven percent of thirty-eight eighteen is twenty-seven.
And that's what, where, yeah, where nine-one-one dispatches you first.
Correct. And there's, that's an important thing to note, and thank you for bringing that up. Uh, there is a little bit of a misunderstanding among some. We don't determine where we go and how we go. Uh, nine-one-one, when you call nine-one-one, that's the county. The county knows where everybody is, and us, everybody else, they know where all of our trucks are. They know the closest ones, and they're the ones who dispatch. So we were asked that question last night. Um, a member of the public said, well, I, I called nine-one-one, and when you guys came. I said I wanted to go here, and you guys took me there. We also do not control where we take you. The, the nine-one-one center tells us where, who we're picking up, who gets there first, where you're going, and what you're doing with that person. Right? So that was a little bit of a misunderstanding. And the boxes, as they're called, um, I took a drinking from a fire hose lesson. Uh, the boxes, again, are controlled by the county. It's controlled by the location, and it's also. Can be modified with the, uh, the individual municipalities can ask for changes in box.
How far done was your box coming to Tinnicum?
I'm sorry?
Where's the line in Tinnicum where your box ends and Point Pleasant begins?
I don't have that map in front of me.
Approximately, maybe approximate?
Barb? Okay, she'll pull that up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. How did your situation financially get so bad so quickly?
It didn't.
Okay.
The finance, the situation, no, the situation has always been this bad. This, the situation has been this bad for twenty years.
How have you been covering the shortfall?
Grants.
Okay.
Gifts, endowments, uh, fundraising. Man, I call it matter from heaven. It's basically we got lucky. Um, and. That is why we're making an operational change of how we go about our business. Uh. We, when we come up with that number of the budget that we presented to all the municipalities, we are excluding grants. We are excluding. Uh, subscriptions, we're excluding, uh, donations, because you don't want to rely on those monies, because they're not guaranteed monies, right? And they're not guaranteed amounts. Um, so to fund operations, it's strictly going to be providing EMS service and the monies from the municipalities. Those other monies will be used for capital projects, updating the ambulances, buying new ambulances, buying new equipment, et cetera. An emergency fund in case we have the, the aw shucks moments. Uh, but yeah, this is a bad situation. It's a nationwide and statewide situation. Um, we have had multiple, um, and EMS services go out of business in the state in the last couple of months. Uh, and I believe in Delaware County, um, they have stopped EMS. The hospital service has stopped EMS. Uh, because the EMS service wasn't getting paid, and that just stopped happening.
That's kind of a complex problem down there, too.
I, I understand, but it, but it's not a, a- again, the, the challenge, hey, Jim, the challenge, again, in, in our area. Is the widespread geography, the small amount of population that we serve, the amount of transports we do. It's just not economically viable for the business, right? You, you can't, and we don't want more customers. Right? Ideally, we don't have customers, but we don't want more customers. We can't raise our rates. And in order to cover this kind of shortfall on an ambulance ride, it would have to be five thousand dollars, and that would only be paid by about thirteen percent of the population. Right now, uh, sixty-plus percent of our population is Medicare Medicaid. That is a fixed cost. We lose money every time we do that. Uh, there's approximately thirteen to fourteen percent that are self-insured. Right? And again, that's somebody getting a bill for several thousand dollars, and, you know, that's a tough bill to swallow for a lot of people. Uh, and we, we, balance of that is, uh, commercial insurance, and they pay a reduced rate. So, uh, the amount of billing we make, we make about. Seventy percent of seventy percent, or sixty percent of seventy percent, somewhere in the mid-forties to high-forties is how much we actually. Receive in revenue from actually doing the services that we do.
So you have two stations. You have one in Revere and one in Springfield Township.
Correct.
So prior to twenty twenty-four, was there twenty-four-seven service out of the Revere Station?
Yes.
No.
No. Okay.
Yeah, there are major swings on your nine-nineties, and it looks like there's a swing of two, two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in your.
Yeah. So do you, can you speak to that, Anthony?
Nope.
You're the board president.
I've been the board president for two months, and I am not knowledgeable on all topics.
How long have you been on the board?
April of twenty-two.
So, so you were just voted in as president two months ago, November?
Uh, uh, December.
December.
Correct.
Okay.
No, December twelfth, fourteenth.
Is that the normal time that you have officer elections? It's December?
Uh, no, we had a resignation.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
What, when is the normal time that you have in January or?
Uh. Yeah, fiscal year.
So it'll be July then?
No.
No.
Fiscal year, January.
January is fiscal year. Okay, well, with school districts, it's July. You know, it, it moves.
Okay.
Like you guys, we.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so you're not on a microphone?
Yeah.
And we value your input. So when you are saying something, please come up to the microphone.
At least one of them.
So again.
The people in the room is for our recording and the people joining us remotely. So my question was, prior to twenty twenty-four, was there twenty-four-seven service out of the Revere Station? Can you please come to the mic and give us that history?
I'm not sure when it began, or when the dispensation was granted, but the.
When you say it, what do you mean?
When the timeframe that we would be out of service with the county, that both the county, the municipalities, the. Adjacent organizations, anybody that we would respond with, would be aware of. And there was, uh, this is before my time as far as an officer goes.
And how long have you been an officer?
I was chief in two thousand and eight for a year.
Okay.
And I was deputy for, I don't know, five or six years recently.
You're speaking of.
And chief since twenty twenty-three.
So the timeframe you're speaking of is before two thousand and eight?
It was before thou- two, before two thousand and eight.
So what?
And I've, and I've looked for that information. I haven't been able to find it. So somehow, we received the ability to take the one forty-two station or the one forty-one station.
And one forty-two is Revere?
In Revere, and one forty-one is in Springfield. We had the ability to take one or the other of those stations out of service from midnight to six AM. Every day. We attempted to fill those shifts. But there was a lot of money that went to coverage with no reimbursements. There wasn't any, there weren't any calls. So we tried to play the balancing game of, since, since I became chief, we tried to balance. When and which station was going to be out of service when. We played with daytime stuff. We played with nighttime. We looked at data. Um, but for probably fifteen years. One of the other stations has been down. Six hours at night. Frequently, this one.
This one being Revere?
Yes.
And frequently being. Over eighty percent of the time.
I'd have to look at those numbers. I couldn't, I couldn't.
Why would you pick, uh, Springfield to be the one to be left open as opposed to one forty-two?
As we covered in the November meeting, uh, and in the January meeting.
Yeah, I, I know the answer, but go ahead.
That's.
Fine. For our, for our people here.
It's, it's strictly revenue-based. So we had to make a decision. And the cost to operate the Revere Station overnight is approximately three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the year. The revenue generated by operating the Revere Station during that time period is less than fifty thousand dollars a year. So that'll generate, that represents a loss of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The numbers are more favorable for the Springfield Station being open, because the Springfield Station would do more mutual aid transports, which generate. And the one forty-two Revere Station did almost no mutual tra- mutual aid transports.
Well, on November nineteenth, you appeared before the board, and you stated that you were within six months of shut it, shuttering due to funding. Is that still the case?
No.
Okay.
We're probably six months from now. But that is one of the factors, or probably the factor, that drove the decision to have to close the Revere Station for twelve hours. Um, where, again, we have, uh, we've, we've gotten more monies. We've had multiple municipalities forward their twenty twenty-five numbers, their twenty twenty-five contributions to us. We've reduced our expenses. We've improved our billings, um, and we've made steps towards extending that horizon. Uh, had we not, uh, shuttered Revere for the twelve hours, then yes, we would be very, very close. Uh, as it stands right now, our number going backwards is a little more than a third of where it was, uh, in November. Um, but.
What do you mean by that? Your number going backwards is a?
The amount we were losing every month. We were losing forty to sixty thousand dollars every month. We're closer to about twenty-five thousand dollars now.
I'm going back to your board real quick, um. Are your meetings open to the public?
No.
Are they, they're not advertised, open to the public? Are the minutes available to the public for those meetings?
Jim, do you know the answer to that?
General, we are a nonprofit.
Jim.
Jim, do you want to come up to the mic? And just tell us.
Yes.
Good evening, Adam. Um, I'm James Nilson, Springfield Township. I am the treasurer for Ubremz and have been for about ten years. So if you're looking for some historical information, I might be able to answer some of those for you, and it'd be the best of my recollection. Uh, in reference to question again?
Are the board meetings open to the public, and are the minutes available to the public?
We are a nonprofit corporation, and like many nonprofit corporations, we are a private entity. So the answer to that is generally no. We open them up to the municipalities as necessary when there's questions like this. Uh, we had a request from one of the township to see six years' worth of our, uh, financials, P and Ls in nine-nineties, and we made that available to them. Uh, we typically will offer the nine-nineties. They're audited every year, because we receive government funding. We make those available, you know, to the municipalities as we're, uh, doing the work. Um, tying the P and Ls to the nine-nineties is something that's done every year.
So, and, and how many people are on your board in total?
You have none. No, we have more than that. No, ten. We have ten.
Okay, so Tinnicum has two.
Tinnicum has two. We have no representative from Bedminster.
All right.
And two from Springfield.
Okay. And, and. You already told us how you get them. I don't recall us being presented to us during our organizational meeting, but that might be our shortfall here, but. Well, you know, as far as appointing these people, I've, I've, this is the first I've heard. That our board is the one who appoints someone a yearly basis. That may be that it was that way, but I never really, not being on the board.
Yeah.
Noted it that much. So. Um, what would say I, I mean, the, the average length of time people have spent on your board is? You know, a lot of new members, the old members, how many?
We have, well, we have ten members. I've been on since twenty-two. John has been on about a year. Tim's been on a few months. Um, everybody else has been on for an extended period of time.
Okay. Okay, I know ours happened.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Ed Dougherty is, is one of your reps, and he's been on the board for a while. He was the president for quite some time. Um, and I know Gary's been on longer than for quite some time as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay. Okay. Well, it's something that. We'll take care of that internally. Um, okay, uh.
Do understand when we speak about being appointed to the board, it's a two-way process. Uh, there are clearances that need to be taken, so it's not, you appoint someone and they're automatically on the board. They need to be vetted on our side, too, and there's training and certifications that they need to get to come onto the board.
I understand that. It's just that I'm just, my point is, I've not heard that this is how, I'm just trying to find out how the boards assemble. I'm not. Saying anything that the virus has been going on, just trying to figure out.
Yep.
How it's assembled, how, how long people are there, what the breakdown of the representation is, which I now have. So it's just, you know, I'm just trying to get a composition of your organization, how it operates, and where the decision-making comes from. That's where, that's where I'm running with that. Sorry, that's about one forty-two closing, um. Wha- what is your thoughts on having just the one station, being one forty-two, since that is the geographically central location and cutting out one entire station?
Mm-hmm. So, it's our opinion that the me, the area is not best served by one station. Um. The finances would dictate one station, uh, being the most financially responsible. However, the area that we cover and the amount of people that we cover, uh, does not. Make one station a, a good option, in our opinion. Uh, again, when you have one station, if something goes awry, that station goes out on a call. And if something happens somewhere else, now you're relying on mutual aid from much further away to come and service that second call.
What, what kind of call volume do you have at night within your normal service box, not including mutual aid, out of one forty-one? What, what, how many calls until, into your service box does one forty-one make per night?
Per night?
On, on average.
I don't have that off.
Tim. So one forty, hey, Tim?
Yeah.
Would you come up here, please? Tim's, Tim Southern is, uh, our newest board member from Springfield. Tim's, uh, much more intimate with the data.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the number. Sorry. Tim Southern, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, although I believe you, you do. Um, basically. Basically, a third of the volume in this coverage area happens at night. So two-thirds happens between six AM. happens at night. So two thirds happens between six AM and six PM.
All right.
The majority, the majority of the nighttime volume is on the, the Springfield side.
Does that include your mutual aid though?
That, I mean, that, that adds to it and that certainly reduces the expense to the rest of the municipalities when we, when we factor that revenue in. I mean, just for January, I know because I looked at it. There were, I believe, zero calls that were covered by one twenty four in our covered area in Tinnicum.
Okay. I mean, that's the word I'm getting from one twenty four is I would slow numbers.
Yeah.
But the question I have is, you're saying you want to service the area. My concern of area is Tinnicum Township and the rest of the area that you have covered. Uh, and so, you know, you're saying that you're, you're servicing the area the best by having one forty one open, but not as far as I'm concerned.
No, I'm absolutely not saying that. I will clarify that. Having one forty one open is probably not the best coverage for the area, but it is the economic reality that we face and that we had to make a decision on. We do not want to not have coverage for the area. It was just a, a financial crisis that we had to make a decision on. And the small dollars, it may be only several thousand dollars difference between the two, but every dollar matters when you're running in a giant negative and you have almost no reserves. So it was not, the decision to keep one forty one open versus one forty two was not best service. That was best economics. That being said, one forty one is not that far from everybody else. It does not gen, germanely impact a lot of people's numbers. But, uh, that was the decision. That's why the decision was made. If we go down to one station, we are not proposing that one forty one be that one station. And we're also not proposing to go to one station. We do not believe that that is in the best interest of the community at large. Because all it takes is two calls at the same time and you're, and you're in a bad shape.
So currently you have two, two, two crews on during the day on both stations?
Correct.
And one crew on.
At Springfield.
Springfield, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Let me emphasize, when we talk about community, Tinnicum is part of the community. It goes from Regalsville to the northern parts of Tinnicum. It goes along the river in between. We have a physical barrier. We're three bridges. One of those bridges we cannot cross. You do not have ALS service coming over that bridge into. So you got a physical boundary on the side and that goes along the county line of Lehigh, cutting down roughly three oh nine down in towards Quakertown and then cutting back around into, uh, Haycock Bedminster. So when we talk about our community, our definition of community are nine municipalities, not just Tinnicum. So when we take, we talk about covering, we're talking about covering seventeen thousand customers.
Seventeen eight.
Seventeen eight. We're talking about one hundred and twelve point five square miles.
Okay.
And of that, I believe roughly about fifteen to twenty square miles of that overall area.
What, Tinnicum?
Tinnicum.
It's twenty something.
No, but that we cover.
Yeah, that we cover. We cover, again, our coverage as from what I see is twenty one point eight.
Okay. Can I move on to something else? Um, I want to talk about your scheme. Okay. Want to talk about your assessment scheme that you have in place here of the per capita?
Scheme?
Well, it's plan, scheme, whatever you want to say.
Model.
Model, model, whatever words you want to use. You have a plan, model, scheme, that. To me, scheme is, maybe it's a negative connotation, but I don't mean it to mean.
Maybe.
So you, you told us how you arrived at the twenty seven forty three based on our air, our fifty three number that you cover us in this township, right?
Yep.
So.
Uh, no, twenty one eighty three.
Eighty three, okay.
Sixty three, sorry, my eyes aren't that good. Twenty one point six three.
My ears, ears aren't. So I guess twenty, twenty seven sixty three is the number that you came up with based on landmass. Did you take into account the huge areas of our township that do not have population, that will not have population?
As I clearly said, I, I could not do that. There was, it was, it was not realistic for me to go lot by lot and figure out person by person. We took our best estimate at it. We did the best we could. And again, our model was percentage that we cover, population and use that as, as a model.
Well, so here's, here's the issue I have with it.
Let me explain it one step further. We went to the county and we went, uh, and asked them for population maps. And the only thing they can do for us or you is to give you a population map based upon your township to break it down into the boxes that we call our call boxes. They were unable to do that. So the methodology that we ended up using, and I expressed this when we met on the thirtieth, I was very clear about it. I'll express it again. We took total square miles. We took the population based upon those areas and we had to do the math based upon that.
I'm, I'm aware of that, but these people didn't go to that meeting. So they need to hear this also. And I'm going to point them going to make. The problem I have with this is because we have these large open areas, I got a feeling that your population character, uh, numbers may be significantly in error. Because I just spent a year going through this township from one corner to the other and up and I will tell you that the northern part of this township is far less populated than the southern part of the township. And I think that bears out, but the call volumes that we have from one twenty four and from, uh, one forty two or from Ubrams, let's say in total. And they're about the same. In fact, Ubr, uh, one twenty four does more calls into Tinnicum Township than Ubrams does. And I think a lot of it has to do with population density for one. And of course we have the one place, but that doesn't matter because the calls are the calls. You know, one person needs a hundred calls or a hundred people need one call. It's a hundred calls. So I, I think you're off there. And in that regard, then you would be over assessing us for our, our taxes. And that's, that's the thing that, you know, because we, when we assess this, we're not assessing it on a per capita basis. When we assess, we assess by real estate taxes. So somebody who's in one twenty four area is going to be paying the increase we need to cover you. And in addition there to with the other, with the other service in place, it doesn't seem fair to me to say that we're going to throw a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is what you're looking for from us.
Okay.
At you and then say to, you know, Point Pleasant, go pound sand. So we got to do something with them also and probably something equitable. So when you cook a system like this in place, we're doubling down on it. And, and, and Point Pleasant hasn't come here knocking on our doors looking for a hundred and seven thousand dollars. In fact, we haven't heard Bupkis from them this year. They're a little, they were a little upset with what you gave them, but they take some responsibility for, for not giving us the numbers we needed to give them their, their, what they were looking for. So what my cure, my, I'm very, very curious about it. Like, how do we, how do we reconcile this? And, and, and I'm slightly, like, I'm looking at all this eight hundred and some odd acres up there in the north end of the township. There, there's nobody and there's not going to be anybody. And that doesn't include the properties we have under conservation easement. So my feeling is what we have to do, I'll take your number of thirty nine, whatever it is, thirty three per capita. When I multiply that out, I'll round it off to thirty nine dollars with the thirty eight hundred and seventeen, which is our entire population. I come up with a hundred and forty eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty three dollars. If I divide by, by two, because we have even call rates between the two services, I come up with seventy four thousand, four hundred and thirty one dollars. And that's about as much as I'm going to want to offer to Ubrams, because I'll offer that also to Point Pleasant. That's, that's the way I'm thinking about it. And I'm using your number of thirty nine dollars per person to be the number that people need to make that, that you need to see to make money on calls.
I, I appreciate that. But again, that to use, um, some of what you said, you, you bring up valid points. So maybe there are less populous areas. So that reduces that seventeen thousand eight hundred to a lower number, which brings the per capita number higher. Right? Seventeen thousand eight hundred is our.
My point. Well, but again, you're saying you're going to use my number of thirty nine, thirty nine, thirty three. If we take that divisor down, the per capita is going to go up.
Right? Because that's our divisor. You have your deficit. You have your, you have your population. That's our, the population of the divisor. If we reduce the population by, say, a thousand, right? You're now taking seven hundred and dividing it by sixteen eight. You're no longer dividing it by seventeen eight. And again, I'm not debating that the best way. We made our best efforts. We do not have the ability, as Jim just, just said. There, the data is not available for us to go. There is this many people here. There's this many people there. There's this many people.
I understand all that. I'm, and, and you take the thousand out of yours. We still have the thousand somewhere else in our township to take care of. That's the issue I have here. You, you know, it's very simple. Like you said, if you've got Durham Township uses just you as a service, Bridston just uses you as a service. Regalsville is unfortunately going to be in a position for them, they feel to be, they got to use your service. And what you're doing with Regalsville is really kind of it, it's got to be painful for them, what they got to, and, and he does it up there. Talking to one of their members today, he's doing it on a per call. How much does it cost per call for everybody in the township? When you pay these taxes, for him, it's, it's up around seven hundred dollars a call. For us, it'd be somewhere around four hundred and sixty dollars a call. For Nakamixen though, it's three hundred and fifty dollars a call. And I don't know, I don't know how you, how do you, how do you justify that where you're charging us that much per call and less for Nakamixen and so much more for Regalsville? This, this, this formula you have to me is flawed. It's, it's, it's flawed and, and it's, it's not particularly fair. I'll take your thirty nine dollars per person. I'll take that as the number that you need to get from us, but I'm not going to look at it at twenty seven hundred and sixty three people. It's got to be somewhat less than that in my mind, just because of the way our population is distributed in this township.
And that's fine, but understand that that will impact the other municipalities.
I understand that, but my concern is Tinnicum Township. Understand that.
It's, I, I do understand that Tinnicum is, is the most important to you as well. It should be.
Yes.
That being said, again, we are a region. We serve a region. We are trying to do the best for everybody in the region. I appreciate your input on how we came to our calculations. I stand by, that is our best effort. If someone can come out with a better model and everybody agrees to it, that's fine. We're not, we are not saying that this is.
It's.
But you have to, but you have to get eight other municipalities to agree to that.
I, 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 I don't know that I do, because we don't have other options that don't include Ubrams in our plans. Just be aware of that. And I, I could also.
We're aware, we're aware that Central Bucks has been reached out to and talked about coming in and replacing Ubrams. Central Bucks would come up and replace Ubrams. If we go out of business, they will bring one station up here. They will not bring two and nobody in the region will have a seat on their board. That is from Chuck Pressler himself.
I, I, I heard it from him also. I know what the situation is with Central Bucks, but that may not be our only.
The, the. So that's fine. So again, I, if there's a better model and we can all agree with it, that's great. I'm all for it. This was our best effort. We thought this most equitable. We had to come up with it under the gun and I, and I believe it stands. Is it perfect? Certainly not. But is it equitable and as best we could do with the data we had available to us? Yes.
Well, for us, what I'm looking at at our township is that we're going to have to come up with two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in tax dollars to cover both you and Point Pleasant, because I can, I don't in good conscience say I'm going to give a hundred and seven thousand dollars to Ubrams and not that to Point Pleasant because they do more calls into our township than you do. And that, that's, that's where my conundrum is here and, and, and you know, they're, and I said, they're not coming here asking us for money at all. I mean, they, they, they probably should be, but they're not. So.
To be fair, I totally understand where you're coming from.
Just say your name again.
I'm sorry, Tim Southern.
Okay.
Also, the new Ubrams board member. So I have a long history in EMS. I worked in this area since two thousand six. I think that when we talk about like paying per call or, or paying per person, what we need to understand is we're paying for readiness, right? To put ambulances where strategically where they need to be so that somebody gets an ambulance at their door in a reasonable amount of time. So if you had more call volume in that twenty one square miles, that ambulance would make sense to shift it closer there, right? We wouldn't need to come to you asking for so much money if you had more call. So it is that geographic area that creates the big hurdle for a service like us.
Well. When I look at, well, again, when I look at this map here, the centralized location is one forty two. That's where the central geographic for your normal service box, not including your mutual aid, which is how much do you get per year from mutual aid?
It's roughly ten percent.
Ten percent? All right. So you, you'd be losing ten percent of your income then if you move to one forty two, to, uh, Revere. That's what you're telling us.
Yep.
And that's what's important. That's important to you. But to me, it's important in our.
When we're, when we're faced with the possibility of going out of business and providing no service to anyone, yes, that is important. When it comes to when it comes to the best service, again, not. But again, we are, we were faced with a situation where the entire region would be without ambulance service because we went out of business. So we made a very difficult decision. I can assure you that this was not made lightly. This was, we all are neighbors. We all live with each other. I might need an ambulance, may not look it, but I'm not the picture of health, right? My wife is a diabetic and she's accident prone and I have a lot of elderly friends, right? We did not say, hey, what the heck? Let's just do this thing. It was a concerted, it was a concerted conversation. We thought about it. We worked it over. We did not want to do it, but we had to.
Do what?
Close Revere for the twelve hours.
Okay, but Revere had been closed for six hours a day from prior to two thousand eight until twenty twenty four.
No, that, that is.
I think that's what we just heard. We just heard that.
Chief is saying that that is true.
For the last.
Well, please come to the microphone.
What are you saying, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm interested in hearing what Barb has.
In one moment.
No, I think we should hear from her first.
Go ahead. Selective stations.
There has been a history at up a Bucks regional that one station or the other would come out of service from midnight to six AM in an agreement with the state and with the region. I have personal knowledge of this. My sister was the director of emergency services in Bucks County for fourteen years. I know that it existed. I can't find it. Nobody seems to have a copy of that agreement anywhere. It was because of the call volume between the, in the municipality during that timeframe. The Springfield Station began to gain traction with call volume sometime in the last five years or so, because the the, uh, St. Luke's network was using their their ambulances to ferry patients between facilities, which they needed to do. And they would keep one or two ambulances available daytime. And at night they went down to one and we would go in and cover into the Richland Town Borough area, Richland Township, and sometime as far as Milford. Um, and it began to support the extra revenue that we needed to supply our, our needs here and yours. During that timeframe, Mr. Blanchard went to the county and made a, a decision with their GIS, I think, from what I've learned from Mr. Tuttle today, that the three southern boxes, I guess they're southwestern boxes of Tinnicum were then, had been one forty two's first response area and they were changed to one twenty four's first response area, which took from one forty two, two hundred and twenty two calls per year. And took us to where they're running two hundred and twenty two calls a year and we're running a hundred and something into that area. Excuse me.
Okay, go ahead. I, I just want to say, I was, I was at the meetings when this discussion took place. I mean, it was pretty heated, as I recall. Got a little heated anyway.
That wasn't.
It was all about response times with him. That, that the one twenty four was going to be giving quicker response times to the southern interior of our township. And that's why he made that decision. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that that to me was, was what his his, um, um, thought process was.
I've known John thirty years.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the, the problem with the GIS system right now, or maybe it's not the GIS station system, maybe it's a decision that Tinnicum's made that we have to look at, that I don't know about. But when I'm at home and I hear one forty two's goes out and I know that I've still got a staff in one forty one's house and I know that one twenty four's is out, I get a little nervous for y'all to the point where I start getting in my car from Ivyland to come here to see about putting a truck up if I can grab somebody. And the next thing I hear is Central Bucks dispatched to Anawanda Road to cover one forty two with one forty one sitting in the house. My question then becomes how really worried are we of the municipality residents if that's happening? That has to be an error when one twenty four's goes to High Rocks and one forty two is in house and the next due according to the GIS who goes to this, not having any idea where they're going or what their responsibilities are, is Grandview coming across the ridge to go to High Rocks to help with the rescue. What we want is this closest, most appropriate ambulance at the time of need to go to your residence. That's what we want.
When were those two calls where CB went to Anawanda? When were those two calls where C B went to Anawanda?
That was just two weeks ago.
Okay, did you?
Maybe three weeks ago.
Contact anybody?
I did not.
Okay.
No.
What about the other call?
The other call was right after the G I S system went into effect, and Mr. Panko was still chief here, so I would say it was sometime in twenty twenty two.
And do you know whether a any report was made to the township?
The report, Mike was on that, he and Mr. Panko, and I don't remember who was coming in in the Grandview truck. But um my question to the chief at the time at Upper Bucks was, why didn't you call them and send them? It's obviously an error. Send them there. When they get there and they recall he's coming.
That this is an error in how the boxes are set for the county?
Yes, there's been errors in in the timeframes of who is going to go, who's going to go where. I found out today there's a a um a one forty nine station. Do we know anything about that? Because that's the first I've heard about a one forty nine station. Did we implement that to see if Central Bucks coming up here, what their location calls were going to be and how it was going to affect one twenty four and one forty two? Is that a new station, one forty nine?
Forty nine.
Yes.
Point Pleasant's new kind of part-time station at the Votek?
No, they don't have a designation.
No, from what I understand, that's going to be one twenty three.
Okay.
For Dublin. So I was just wondering if you guys knew what that one forty nine was?
No.
No.
Because I'm going to use it.
Thanks, Barb.
You're welcome.
So I just want to kind of go back. Prior to twenty twenty four, for six hours out of the day, one of your stations was down, out of service.
Could be, yeah.
What? No, let's be clear with our answer. Was it down every day?
I can't say that. No, I don't think it was down every day. It was an option for us to take it out of service. It happened frequently.
Gary, we can't have this. If you want to talk, you have to come up to the mic and tell us who you are and also wait your turn.
It did happen frequently.
Okay, it happened frequently.
Some of that was a staffing issue at times as well.
I am sure.
We don't have a staffing issue now.
Ninety percent of the time?
I can't tell you that, ma'am. I'm going, we would have to pull those records and see.
And these records are held at the county?
Uh, I have no idea. We'd have to go through and find out where to get them. Going back fifteen years, I guess we'd have to pull them. I don't know what's what's left after the CAD crashed. I don't know.
So prior to twenty twenty four, Anthony, you had said that Ubrams for for the past twenty years has been in um financial dire straits.
Correct.
Okay, and prior to uh year after year, you were getting what you call mana from heaven.
Yes.
Right? These are foundation grants. Is that right?
donations, yes.
Okay, but you were receiving um pretty consistently a grant from a nonprofit organization or some kind of foundation, I think based up in the Lehigh Valley. Is that right?
So.
And that was in the amount of roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year?
Jim can answer that.
That was based actually out of Springfield Township, uh, Priscilla Payne Heard.
Mm hmm.
She has passed.
Yes.
Uh, she's been passed for five years now, six years, and uh the foundation has changed their baseline. The amount of money we received from the foundation at any given time was between eighty thousand upwards of two hundred thousand. Most of the time was about a hundred thousand dollars that we received during my time with Ubrams.
Okay, and can someone explain the decision that the Ubrams Board made prior to twenty twenty four in the midst of these financial dire straits for you to put a second truck up twenty four seven and increase your expenses when there is very little to no call volume during those nighttime hours?
There was a period of time, as we expressed, where we were up and down. We had a phantom station. The phantom station, as we described, I don't know if anyone's spoken to this yet this evening. So when we went down to one station, we spent an active period of time parking our vehicle somewhere between Stony Point Store, which is four twelve and, give me the road.
Gallows.
Gallows Hill, thank you. And um the four twelve, six eleven. We tried to stay either at Bucksville Shopping Center, was usually the ideal. That is the center of our territory, not the Revere Station. So we would have a vehicle parked there as much as we could when we were down to one vehicle. That way they could respond equally in any direction. And a responder was, and well, and that was the flip side of that. This other thing we haven't spoken to. When we went down to one, we had a responder up and running. So we had a paramedic in one vehicle, not able to transport, but most certainly able to go out and treat and wait for someone to uh come to do a transport. Stabilizing and what we felt that was probably the best care that we could provide for the most financial, biggest bang for your buck. So you get a paramedic at your doorstep, and that person would be sitting at the Revere Station. I had many payrolls where I would have a paramedic at one station and ambulance up at the other. And that's still not considered up a hundred percent. That model has been going on actively for about.
Barb, you're not on the mic. I'm sorry.
I will repeat, two thousand seventeen roughly, when we bought that responder. And that was the model that we're utilizing so that we had a full ALS, and it's always been our goal to have ALS, ALS being one paramedic, one E M T.
So the responder is a vehicle?
With a paramedic.
Okay.
And that unit is covered with all the uh necessary items for a paramedic to perform their duties.
But not the transport.
But not the transport. That's correct. Thank you.
So who can illuminate the decision to go up twenty four seven at two stations?
Springfield Township. We had this conversation, Springfield Township, and we also got a grant for the coverage of one year that ma- made up the difference to put up going from a responder up to full ALS.
And what? So what year was that grant for?
I want to say that was in twenty one, I believe, is when uh monies came through in twenty one for that.
Okay, is it accurate that Revere was not up twenty four seven prior to twenty twenty four?
No, that's not an accurate statement.
Barb, is that an accurate statement?
Leave what was said, it, she's walking away from the mic. I'm still at the mic. What we have said is that it's been going between the two stations. We don't, we did not shut down one station. We moved back and forth between the two. And when one of the stations was down, it was being covered with a paramedic.
Gary, you have something to add?
Gary Pearson, I was the president during the time of Barbers. Gary Pearson, I was the president during the time you're asking about, and we were using a system status uh ma- model to keep as much staff available at all times, and that's why we were actually moving the ambulance. The corner of a uh phantom station is kind of misleading. The county was aware of it, and they knew we were doing this. That gave us the best response times within the area. It wasn't done every day. It wasn't done. It may not have been done for weeks at a time, but it was done when we had staffing. And it wasn't just Upper Bucks that was doing this. Uh, Point Pleasant was doing it. As far as I know, they're still doing it. Central Bucks does it to some extent. It's with a common system status management practice in the industry. If you don't have people to staff the apparatus, you have to do something. And we were trying to provide the maximum coverage at the time when we could. Thank you.
When was the decision made to put Revere up twenty four seven?
We never made a decision not to have Revere up twenty four seven during that time period.
Gary, Ubrams had a, I think Barb called it a dispensation from the state, special authorization to go out of service.
That was for those brief six hour periods when we couldn't staff the station.
Over fifteen years, though.
That's completely common in the EMS industry.
I'm not saying it isn't common.
I'm understanding your question, and I'm sorry.
My question is that for over a decade, two decades, you've been in dire financial straits.
Yes.
And in around the time of twenty twenty four, the Ubrams Board decided for, but they would have two stations twenty four seven. And that decision was made despite being in these dire financial straits. I'm trying to understand why.
The best services.
Why? Well, you you talk about best service.
No, I don't talk about it. I feel that I feel that very strongly.
But Anthony, you've you've given two explanations tonight of decisions you've made because it's the the most bang for the buck.
I appreciate you putting it that way.
Those were your words.
I did not. I said it was the most advantageous, most fi- was financially responsible.
I don't know if you said.
But. It's pretty simple. I'm just trying to get clarity around the decision to put Revere open twenty four seven.
EMS station based on state and county requirements are supposed to be open twenty four seven.
And Ubrams had a special dispensation to not do that.
Unless you had certain issues while you were waiting to be able to get out of that, like you don't have a person to staff the ambulance. You would take the ambulance down for that period of time. Point Pleasant did the same thing. It wasn't an unreasonable, and it wasn't that we made a decision not to staff twenty four seven. We attempted to staff twenty four seven for that entire time period.
For the, since prior to two thousand and eight, you were attempting to staff two stations twenty four seven?
Yes.
Were required to.
You're saying you're required to, but the reality is you were given special permission to to not comply with that requirement. That's true, right? Please, Barb.
Okay, Barbara Stubble, listen again. The county has an emergency response plan that when I took over as chief in twenty twenty three said that we would be inspected, the stations would be inspected, and that the county's emergency response plan for EMS would require that both stations, any station that you had licensed, would be up twenty four seven, three sixty five to the level of your license, which required us to put both stations up twenty four seven, three sixty five ALS. We crunched some numbers as office, I did not, my deputy chief did, who's no longer here. He crunched some numbers, and he thought that we would be able to sustain that, given that we had gotten money from COVID. We'd gotten three hundred and some thousand dollars that we were able to put the towards those resources. And that once that began, and we could make some decisions about the one forty one station and where it was located, the one forty one station would have the sustainability for to help out with the one forty two station over here. And right now, you you've got a station and a half that one twenty four's is barely coming in, that one forty ones can come in and cover, that the coverage is there. I'm confused. All due respect, all due respect. You guys have a tough job. What I'm trying to figure out is, this has been forty plus years for me facing municipalities, and that's from trihampton area to here. All right, and it's always the same where we're trying to virtually justify our existence to municipalities who should want to have us here, and the cost is the cost. The system status management thing is going to bite us all, because I understand this. I've been friends with Mike Tuttle forty years and with Chuck Pressler probably longer than that. All right, and there's a respect here between the three of us. I called them both and asked them what the devil they were doing. All right, I got breakfast out of it, too. It was great. The the, back in the early nineties, it was so, it was so sensitive an issue getting ambulances to people that there was a system status management program that was test driven by Bucks County between Warrington Ambulance, Shawford Ambulance, Central Bucks Ambulance, Point Pleasant Plumsett Ambulance, where at night from about nine o'clock to maybe six in the morning, one ambulance from one of those organizations put that truck in Doylestown Hospital. There wasn't enough call volume out of those areas, all of those areas. And we cover what twenty nineteen percent of all of Bucks County's landmass with six percent of the population. There's not enough call volume to do it. These people still deserve an ambulance. They deserve an ALS ambulance, because if it's a BLS ambulance, it's going to go in the crapper, because the ALS truck is going to come in and take everything. So if if we're not here and and Central Bucks decides, all right, we're going to go and try and do it. Where do you think that truck for Central Bucks is going to be when Doylestown area is kind of crammed and with a need? Do you think they're going to have somebody else's ambulance come into their local? They're going to float this truck that way. Just like I was floating the the Springfield truck into Tinnicum. And just like now, somehow or another, Central Bucks is coming to Anawanda Road. Not in the best interest of the residents when I've got a truck sitting six miles away. It happens. The system status management happens. We used it to our advantage up here, and nobody died, to the best of my knowledge, that wasn't going to die anyway. All right, horrible way to put it. Sorry, gang, but there's there's a reality at EMS, and that's a reality in EMS. And sometimes we can't pedal fast enough to get there. If you talk about response times, our response times are not reflective of how fast we can actually get there. They're not. And I will show you the boxes. I got a box in my pocket right now to show you the difference in one forty one is fifteen minutes out from a call, but somebody else is eighteen minutes out from a call, but they're going before us. What? How did you figure that out with the G I S? And when I call them, I go and have a meeting with Gina at the county. She's the field rep. And say, Gina, how is this possible? And she plugs it all into her computer, and she says, oh, that doesn't work, and plug something else into the computer. And what she did was change day and time and traffic patterns. Nobody can argue with our day and time and traffic patterns up here, can they? We don't have any red lights. We have very few stop signs, and the only thing that stops our progress up here are coyotes and deer. We don't run anywhere lights and sirens anymore. The the rule is if they're if they're in a residential facility, they're in a in a doctor's office, they're in a in a, somewhere where there is someone that can care for them. Risk versus need says you do not go lights and sirens. My staff does not. They will not, and they won't work here. It's a risk versus need thing. But I'll tell you, I sit at my house in Ivyland, and I watch Advanced Nurse run hot past my house nineteen times a day, going for transports. All right? It's not as it seems. You need to have us here. This organization needs to be here, and we're doing our best to step up and give you the information that you want. I promise you, this guy, it's the first time I felt supported in this career in my forty years. You listening like this? Also. Thank you. But you need us here. It's not going to work the other way around. It's not, it's not going to work. You have an ambulance and a half twenty four seven right now, and you're trying to talk us into one.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Good. I mean, we we're digging into this deeper, I think, than some of the townships might have with you. We're putting you under the gun here, to be honest, and you know.
Happy to answer it. I'm happy to be here and answer any questions.
Has to come out exactly what's going on, but we're we're talking about an increase in this township of a lot of millage because we're covering two services. And and we're going to have to, we're going to mitigate that a little bit. That can't be, we cannot, we cannot. We can, but we're talking about an increase of two and a half mills in our in our millage, which is going to put some people in very bad straits in this township. And I appreciate that we need your service, and I appreciate we need to pay for it. But we've got two of them here. We have to service.
You have community that you have to service.
Well, I mean, to them, we have to support, let's say.
And one thing that I want you to also acknowledge to this, the public, is that you've been presented with numbers in this township. You may not have been on the board. Eleanor, you may not have been on board. I know you've just been appointed. But this township has been shown numbers for the last nine years of what our suggested support model was. And we can go back to the archives and the emails and pull those numbers up. And there was one sheet which showed what every single municipality gave and what we suggested they give and how those numbers were pulled together. I presented to this township multiple times. Other people presented, and I was witness to it. And all the municipalities received those sheets, so the attention that was given to those sheets was varied. I can tell you Springfield Township listened, and they were on board up until about five years ago. And I was a supervisor in Springfield Township for six years. Eleanor, when you were elected, you came to me before you were in office in January, and you asked me about being a supervisor in Springfield Township, and you asked me about Ubrams.
Yeah.
And I explained to you at the time what we were going through. So some of the questions you're asking me are things that I answered at Brigadoon when you and I spoke for an hour and a half. And it was very refreshing to have someone come up to me and ask, because I can tell you, I can count on one hand how many times supervisors have come to me and asked me questions about Ubrams. But we have presented to all the municipalities what the real numbers are. I know Gary was involved, you know, with helping pull those numbers together, as was Ryan. I know Gary was involved, you know, with helping pull those numbers together, as was Ryan Panko. And Ryan had a different style of doing a presentation, but most certainly, we had a spreadsheet that showed the deficit and how we, and it's always been population-based. Unfortunately, as John suggested, it's difficult to get an exact number of people in an area. Now, as I expressed before, anyone who has that ability to come up with it, I am all ears, because I absolutely will update all that and make it more economical for everybody.
So speaking of your deficit, when we met here in.
November.
No, you came in January after. No, you all came in January, you were here.
Right.
And.
Oh, the fact of life.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, at that meeting, I recall being told that the deficit was between three hundred fifty and five hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay. And that alarmed me that it was such a broad range. Um, because I had, I would hope that by that point, after you've shut Revere down twelve hours a day, you would have done a detailed analysis of your financials and you would actually have it more narrow. But tonight, you said your deficit is seven hundred thousand dollars.
That is correct. Why did I, why did they change? Because in the original numbers that I gave to you, after being the president for a month and making all emergency decisions, that was our total deficit because we were carrying, we were counting all sources of revenue. We were counting subscriptions, we were counting donations. We were counting anything we got in one pot. In the new budget that we presented to you, I've, I've again expressed that we are keeping subscriptions, donations, et cetera, out of that pot. Subscriptions and donations traditionally run a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. So that is where the delta is.
All right. So we're talking about an additional for your, your, your organization over and above what we normally do, which is about twenty-five thousand a year, right? To a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Just for clarification.
Yeah.
And I, I don't have the number for me, but if the number we presented to you was a hundred and seven, that is the total. That is not in addition.
Well, I'm saying an additional seventy-five thousand.
Again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, and I apologize. What I'm saying is the numbers that we've presented in the budget is the total, not an addition.
I, I get that, but, but we, we, we taxed and up until last year, the maximum that you could tax, which is half a mil, which we split between the two organizations that are here. And it wound up that you got about twenty-five thousand, if I recall, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand from our township on a normal basis, and now you're going to a hundred and seven thousand. It's seventy-five thousand dollars more a year you're asking to get from us. And, and it's, it's an astounding number to me. And, and for, for what, you know, the number of calls that we get from you in the township.
Well, again, it's, I'll agree with you that the numbers we're talking about are large.
Yeah, I mean, I understand we might have to pay them. I do understand that, but it's for somebody, but you know.
Trying to put it in context. So the numbers we're talking about are large, talking about seven hundred thousand dollars spread out among the communities, right? And in your case, like, you know, I'll take your numbers, I don't have them again, let's say seventy-five thousand dollars. And yes, you can't do it by the head. You do it by the parcel. You're going to do it real estate taxes.
Yeah.
Right? But from my analysis, I haven't looked at everybody's books, I just looked at like in Durham, right? In Durham, the total impact of the change is going to be a grand total of about a hundred dollars per parcel. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less, but it's, but it's in that vicinity. I pay four hundred dollars a year for garbage collection. I find it hard to believe that most people wouldn't put a quarter of the value of their garbage collection on having competent, capable and ready EMS services available. It is not easy for you all. I do not envy your job. I'll be the first one to stand up and say, yes, this is our responsibility that this is in this situation. But there is no financial management. There is no trip to Hawaii. There is no craziness going, right? Again, eighty-three percent of our expenses are the employees.
Okay. John, can I just bring some history back? Back when I was on the Tinnicum board, uh, Tinnicum was giving Ubrum somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. And that number has gradually gone down. They were taking the EMS tax, splitting it, and then bringing it up to fifty with, uh, other funds from the township.
Yeah, to be clear, Tinnicum's contributions have gone down almost annually for the last six years.
I can't, I can't account for that at the moment.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not throwing any shade, I'm just saying. It has gone down every.
But Gary, does that was a part of that, the change in the box cards from?
I think a part of that was.
Twenty twenty, which allowed.
Coming to the dig and having John blanchard a little our ability to respond in Tinnicum.
Well, uh, so when Tinnicum was giving Ubrum's fifty thousand dollars a year, was Point Pleasant also covering half of Tinnicum?
No.
Okay, so that's why.
But Tinnicum's chair is continuously going down.
You're covering half of the township as opposed to a hundred percent.
Thing is that even after, after that, it's still going down.
And, and I, and I think that some, and what Barbara was alluding to is something you actually really need to look at the boxes and see if what, if Tinnicum is getting the proper response for those boxes, because we have nothing to do with that. But if you look at how those boxes are set up, particularly the ones in Lower Part of Tinnicum, you're not getting the closest ambulance because of how that was jury rigged by somebody who's no longer on your board. And that's my opinion. I'm not speaking for people either. But I stopped coming to the, to me because I could not deal with being treated as like, uh, orphan stepdaughter, because he already knew how it should work. So I apologize.
So I do have a note, county boxes, it's something that I plan to follow up with Judith on and, and do the due diligence for us to understand who's responding where and why, and is that the best service being provided to our residents?
And if you're doing something you need to look at is using the county GIS to pick a point in that box, get the closest ambulance to that point, doesn't take into account how you get to that point. It's just, it's taking, uh, as the crow flies, as opposed to how you can actually get to that point in the box. So for example, I was on a call unfortunately a couple of days, a week or so ago, and to get the ambulance to that point, the, there is no way to get an ambulance there for the GIS. So they ended up dispatching one forty-two because they dispatched it to a place that wasn't where the call was, because you can't get there from here.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment if I could.
Sure.
Uh, John Albee and I'm resident Peacock, I'm vice president on the board. There's some intangibles we have to balance when we are in conversations, one station versus two. When Lake Muck and Mixon opens back up during the season, that taxes our resources. That lake takes a lot of attention. Okay, and we don't receive any revenue from any state park office, believe me. But it taxes the resources, not just financially, but taking ambulance to that large crowds that some size are in that park, takes one out of service. We've got to cover that from someplace else. So when you're thinking about going down to one station, there are some things to consider that don't present themselves right smack in the face. And that's one of them we have to deal with, and sometimes the activity at that lake is overwhelming. So, I'm going to make that comment.
Thank you. So Anthony, you, you alluded to this, but over the past three years, have there been any financial irregularities, mismanagement, or questionable expenditures?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. Um, there was a just, uh, someone. I forget who, I'm sorry. Someone was talking about the, um, the increase in mutual aid and calls out of the Springfield station over the past five years, that that has increased. Yes?
I heard that. I believe that to be accurate.
Okay. Um, in two thousand twenty-four, is it accurate that the boxes were changed around Quakertown, which reduced the mutual aid that you are uh, called out for?
That's not necessarily an accurate way to describe it. Uh, were the boxes condensed? They absolutely were. The box, multiple boxes were combined together to create a singular box, so it's like four into one. Uh, along with that, prior to and after, they also realigned who was responding to those boxes. So it's more about who was responding to the boxes, not so much that the boxes were condensed.
Okay, so is it accurate that you're no longer responding to that condensed box?
As a first call, no. As a second, third, or fourth call, or fifth, or sixth call, yes.
And that's where the mutual aid comes in.
Yeah, and also, I, there was a question floating in email about mutual aid and contracted. When I hear that question being asked, it expresses to me, um, there's a lack of knowledge. So mutual aid in the state of Pennsylvania is a state law. The county enforces a state law, so it's the next available ambulance to be able to come to a scene. So in mutual aid, when we talk about mutual aid, it's, it's a fact. The next available ambulance comes wherever we're at. And that, there's times, and I've mentioned this to this board in the past, there are times when you have what I call the perfect storm, where mutual aid takes you to places you would never normally go. And we found ourselves down below St. Mary's Hospital doing mutual aid, meaning we get done with the call, there's an accident or some emergency that goes on nearby where you're at, and you take that call, and you take that. And that's gone, taken us south, it's taken us north, and every one of the services in this area experienced that. And reducing the number of stations complicates and makes that exasperated. And that's the main reason why we do not want to go from down to one station. We want to keep it two stations, especially during the daytime.
Can I just add something to that? For example, I was on a call, we left here, went down to Doylestown Hospital. We went back and serviced in the parking lot of Doylestown Hospital. We were immediately dispatched to uh, Will Einstein student Philadelphia with a patient from Doylestown, from Doylestown, because we were the nearest ambulance to that patient in Doylestown. So I then drove an ambulance to Philadelphia on Route six eleven without knowing how to get there. But that's how the mutual aid works. If you're available and you're the next closest ambulance, you can be sent just about anywhere. Thank you.
Yeah, so in the event, Anthony, that you don't receive the commitment to your proposed model from every municipality in your coverage area, what is your plan B?
Go out of business.
And, and what steps do you take to, um, to facilitate? Would you take any steps to facilitate a smooth transition?
We would do everything possible in our power to make a smooth transition. It is not our responsibility. We absolutely would, but it is not our responsibility. Responsibility to provide EMS service is the responsibility of the municipalities. We happen to be the service that the municipalities are used. We do not have a responsibility to provide EMS service, municipalities do.
Right.
Had, if that decision is made among all the municipalities, Ubrum's is not finance, is not financially sustainable, Ubrum's will shutter.
We are a nonprofit. The ambulance is belong to the community. As a board member, my responsibility would be to the community. So we would work with the community to make things work. It's not our goal to shutter our facilities. It's not the goal of, uh, other ambulance services to move here. The conversations that we had is they would come if we could not maintain.
And you're saying that the assets of Ubrum's, you would facilitate the transfer of those to any service that would be coming in to take responsibility for this coverage area?
We would complete our mission to the bitter end. We are not, we are a nonprofit organization providing emergency medical services to the community of Upper Bucks.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything, Mike?
The only thing I, I could say is looking potentially telling my constituents that we're going to have to quadruple our contribution to your service, and it would kind of seem to me that a central location might be the answer. A one forty, so to speak, somewhere up on four twelve.
Again, that's, we, we are not putting forth that, no, we will not do one station. We will happily do one station if that's what the communities decide. But it's going to have to be a group decision. It has to be all of the municipalities making the decision. We cannot take one station contribution from municipality one and two station contribution from municipality three, and a little bit less from municipality two, and then make some kind of mishmash. That's what we're asking for. We're asking for the municipalities to work with each other. All of you all, we, we don't control the outcome of this. The municipalities control the outcome of this. We can provide the education, we can provide the information, we can provide our opinions, but we don't control this. We can't raise taxes. We can't say that it has to be one or two. And again, I'd like to put forth that we firmly believe that two stations are the appropriate answer. The delta between one and two stations is not half. I forget the exact numbers, but it's, it's about five hundred, I believe, or four hundred thousand dollars is, is the difference. Um, and I'd like to share something with you all about me and my role inside of Ubrum's. Up until I was elected president of Ubrum's, I can guarantee you that I was the least popular board member. I was the thorn in everybody's side. I was the one saying we need to run this like a business. I was the one saying, let's go forward and do this. I was the one saying we have to run to the municipalities. I did not win a popularity contest. I guarantee you the chair I was sitting in had a better chance of being elected president than I did. Fortunately, I was because I believe I am the right person for this job at this time. And I am giving it my forthright best. I am not trying to fleece anybody. It is, there is nothing in this for me except having competent EMS services available to the entire community at large. That's the great win that I get to have if this works out, and that's all I want.
Okay, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up on the agenda under announcements, I'll give you a minute to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just make the announcements. Yes, good night. Okay, so the board held executive sessions on February fourth, February sixth, seventh, fourteenth, all regarding the Headquarters Road Bridge and township real property matters. We also held executive, an executive session on February thirteenth regarding Ronea Oak Grove. It's a land use appeal. And we held an executive session on February seventeenth also regarding Ronea Oak Grove land use appeal, as well as the Weand zoning hearing board appeal. We have reached our first round of public comment. We would invite you to come to the microphone here, tell us who you are, um, and Anita?
Um, yes, and Anita, the sign-in sheet is up there if you would kindly do that. And we can move the microphone over to the, to Scott.
That's all right, I'm fine. Anita Nolan, resident. Um, I have questions about this Ubrum's thing. I'm just, you know, I don't know all the history, et cetera. Um, however, I wondered who covers Tinnicum when Revere is closed? Is it the Springfield, or is it, uh, Point Pleasant, or is it whoever's closest? What's the percentage of, you know, coverage from either of those places or Central Bucks, whatever it is, when, when, um, Revere is closed? I don't know if you can.
One, one twenty-four, which is.
I, I don't want to hear one twenty-four. I don't understand these numbers.
As I said, one twenty-four, which is Point Pleasant, if you let me finish, be fine. One twenty-four, which is Point Pleasant, covers all of Tinnicum, when one forty-two is either shut down or out on call.
So Point Pleasant is covering more than fifty percent of our area.
At times.
At times, okay. Um, second question, why can Point Pleasant meet their budget, but Ubrum's has such a problem? I know you have that same question.
We don't have that answer.
Right? Uh, where does Ubrum's end and Point Pleasant begin in Tinnicum Township?
I just asked on that. I, I don't know exactly myself. It's somewhere around my house, though.
Okay, so it's lower.
It's like one thirteen, six eleven, that area, maybe somewhere in Knoxville, and it shoots straight almost. Well, not quite straight across, but up, I know like, uh, the Tinnicum, the community park, not the community park, but the state county park.
And the Cavity Road.
Part of Ubrum's, you know, so it's, it's like around, it goes up towards Headquarters Road.
Okay. And this is just a comment for the Ubrum's people who are remaining. Um, I, I have never gotten a donation card that I'm aware of from Ubrum's. I've lived here seven plus years. When I lived in Central Bucks, I got one every year and I gave them a donation every year. I realize that's probably a de minimis amount of money coming in, but it's still something, right? Um, I've never gotten one frankly from Point Pleasant either. So I just thought. So I just thought, you know, you guys need to to do that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, on next on the agenda, we have our police chief's report. Um, but our police chief will be giving her report for February at our next meeting. Yes?
Yes, and if I may, uh, there was a letter in the chief's packet uh, from a Mr. Gary Pearson who is here this evening. Uh, he had said that he had learned, um, that for many years, uh, he had, uh, had service in the public sector in New Jersey and and his job, uh, he recognizes that people have to do certain things, uh, in their jobs. And he commended, uh, our officers, uh, actually, one of them is here this evening. Um, Officer David Fleishman, and he commended Officer Daniel Baxter, uh, for helping, uh, give, um, actually running, should I say, to, uh, a person who was was having some issues uh, around the Giving Pond Recreation Area. So he had commended you and and Officer Baxter for that. So we just wanted to say thank you very much.
Yes.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And and I will leave the rest of Chief Madden's report for next month then.
Sounds good. Next up, we have our manager's report.
Thank you. We have some more thank yous. Uh, this morning, we were welcomed by Mrs. Ginny Weaver and Mrs. Kathy Riley. The all the township employees were provided with homemade fashnuts that were made at 4:30 in the morning by these ladies, these wonderful women. So a giant thank you, what a surprise, and and thank you very much. Uh, just, just everyone was elated and just so happy and so grateful. Um, our employees were saying, gee, we we must really be doing a good job that we got all of these people coming out and helping, uh, helping us and doing some nice thing. So I wanted to say a giant thank you. Um, also, uh, we had a donation of filing cabinets, as you see behind you. Uh, a giant thank you to Carl Ruth Hart. He's the one who connected us to, uh, the Salisbury Township Manager. And a giant thank you to the Salisbury Board of Supervisors and their Public Works Department and staff for coordinating and and our public works for retrieving them and so forth. So it was a collaborative effort between everyone, and we we are so grateful because we can certainly, you, we've already utilized the cabinets and the donations, so we're very thankful. And a letter is going out to, uh, thank them also. Uh, I would like to also, uh, discuss that at our Environmental Advisory Committee meeting on February 19th, Kalen Brown provided a presentation regarding the township's local climate action plan. She is an environmental student from Penn State University who researched our greenhouse gas inventory. She collected and analyzed publicly available data about Tinnicum Township's government, population, and business sector. A copy of her findings and analysis of potential strategies for reducing emissions is in our township and available, and it's it's over on the counter if you're interested in reading that. Uh, we did try to put some of the information on our website, but some of it is just too large. So if anyone would like a copy, and if it's not there, we're happy to get you a copy. In preparation for Earth Day, uh, there will be an Earth Day Fair and a seasonal cleanup. So please join the Parks and Recreation Committee for Park Day Cleanup on April 5th. That'll be from 9 to 11 at the Tinnicum Community Park behind Cooper Mechanical. The rain date is April 6th. Please email the Parks and Recreation Chairperson if you're interested in helping, uh, or volunteering. That would be Terry Johnston. His email address is on our website also, uh, for you to look at. If you would plan like to volunteer, like I said, um, please contact him. All of these, uh, informational items that I am provided are on our website as well. So you can, you know, look there, you don't have to write notes tonight when I'm talking. Um, but it's really nice of us to be able to, uh, recognize the committees that are doing these items. There's a drug takeback day on April 26th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Ray Rungs. Um, excuse me. If you miss that event, please use the link on the website, uh, or the police website as well. Uh, there's a list of permanent drop box locations around Bucks Bucks County for your year round, uh, drug drop, excuse me, drug takeback drop off locations. Uh, the EAC is also hosting an Earth Day event on April 27th from 11 to 2 p.m. at our Tinnicum Township Park. Uh, so again, if you're interested, please look into the website. Uh, we also have the 2025 municipal primary election coming up. That'll be Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. Our offices will be closed because we are a polling station, so please come out and vote. A new steering committee is forming, and it is led by Amy Hollander. She's the director of the Erwin Stover House, and she's planning an event for the History Fair at Tinnicum Park in the spring of 2026. She shares the diverse stories of the settlers of Tinnicum Township as they navigated the tumultuous waters of the American Revolution. The committee envisions this event to share music, stories, dancing, games, crafts, news, and a whole lot more that I'll let you look on our website about, so I don't continue to talk too much this evening. Uh, again, please, please visit our website, there's a lot on it. Uh, our groundwater committee had provided the local hydraulic static status. Uh, that information is in the back also, it's also on our website as well. We do have some openings in the township. If anyone is interested for our committees, we have three openings on our Parks and Recreation Committee. We have two openings on our Historical Commission, and we also have two openings on our Land Preservation Committee. We have one opening on our Planning Commission. Again, please see our website for for more information. If you're interested in in volunteering, there's applications and so forth, please contact us. We're happy to to help. Um, I, most of what is on my report moving on down is what is on our agenda at this point. Um, so I look forward to going over the agenda with the Board of Supervisors at this time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Judith.
You're welcome.
Um, our engineer is here this evening. Um, Kurt, would you like to give your your update? And Judith, can you move your mic over to him?
Thank you.
So I provided a report, uh, to the board, uh, dated February 28th, 2025. Uh, I usually put in, uh, any item in bold, which I I feel should be updated on each month. So I I'll go through some of the items. Um, yes, I will get to Headquarters Road Bridge, uh, that is in there. There's a couple of items before that. Uh, the Crucer Track subdivision, uh, the two lot subdivision, Bunker Hill Road and and Beaver Run Road. Uh, that was reviewed in February 26, 2025 memo. There's some additional information, so that will be coming back, um, to the board. I believe there were conditional use items that were, uh, missed in the application. So I think there are some revisions that will be coming back. Uh, the Koenig Track subdivision, uh, that is, uh, two lots on 479 Headquarters Road. That was reviewed, uh, in memorandum dated January 31st, 2025. Um, however, it's also on the agenda for tonight. Um, however, I recently, uh, spoke to the design engineer from Crew Surveying, uh, this evening. And it appears that, uh, there are items in the review letters itself be addressed as far as, uh, conditional use items. Uh, some zoning, uh, requirements such as an environmental impact assessment report. Uh, and there are some revisions that need to be made. Uh, that we do have an extension until, I believe it was June, uh, 15th of 2025. Uh, so those items will be addressed, I believe, and that will be coming back to us. So so you won't have to act on that, uh, this evening. Uh, the, uh, truck study item, um, I I won't go into much detail on that because at this time, because that is an agenda item later on, uh, and mainly that pertains to the Hollow Horn Road, uh, truck restriction ordinance uh, that is up for consideration tonight. Uh, Golden Pheasant Road Bridge, uh, the township did finalize their response and sent that on January 3rd, 2025. I have not, uh, seen any responses to that. Uh, now Headquarters, uh, Road Bridge, uh, as as everyone that was here last month was aware, um, DP issued the GP 11 permit that was needed to go ahead with the project, um, on December 24th. Uh, and they later rescinded that on January 13th, I believe. Uh, so in their rescission, uh, DP had requested additional information. Uh, and it appears that they, the DP has the ability to request, uh, various additional information to make various determinations. Um, the amount of scrutiny has kind of been unprecedented over other applications that have been made to DEP. Um, we've, we've submitted similar plans for GP 11 applications, uh, that have gotten approved. Uh, so it was, it was still kind of unclear why the the extra cautious nature of their concerns, especially when what's being proposed is rehabilitation in kind.
And when you say we've submitted other GP 11 permits, you mean.
My office, yes, yes. We've successfully obtained GP 11 permits. Uh, even the, uh, general permit reviewer from DEP indicated to me in his 31 years, he has not had to rescind any one of his, uh, GP 11 permits.
Hmm.
Uh, so I'm not sure what exactly is going on, why the the extra high level of of detail for this specific application. Um, but on on the good side of this is, um, we did have a meeting that was announced with DEP on February 7th. Uh, and at that conference with DEP, uh, there was a request made for some additional information. Um, I had put together information that was requested. Uh, DP asked us to make a new submission. Uh, instead of, instead of resubmitting or giving us time, uh, to address some of the questions that they had, it basically threw out that whole submission, said you have to make a new submission. Uh, there's no way in our system to proceed. Um, so we agreed to acknowledge what they're asking for. I put together a new submission and I made that, um, turned that around and submitted it on the February 11th, uh, 2025. Uh, after that submission was was made, uh, we've, we've received clearances from the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission. I received clearances from the National Park Service, uh, both from the, uh, historic guidelines standpoint and from the National Wild and Scenic Watershed standpoint. Uh, additionally received clearances from the United States Army Corps. Uh, and with the Army Corps clearance, uh, they, they further issued the PAS GP 6 uh, without exceptions, uh, for this project, which on on DEP's radar at the conference, they indicated that if there's any exceptions listed on a PAS GP 6, then you're not going to be eligible for a GP 11 permit. However, the Army Corps, uh, concurred with the design plans and the perm, the environmental permitting plans. Uh, and we obtained that clearance. At this point in time, I've followed up with DEP. I can't get, uh, individuals on the phone who are part of this review. Uh, I've sent emails and I've given, given responses that, um, more or less lead me to believe that I'm a distraction, uh, to their reviewing efforts. Um, however, I I feel we've already submitted everything that was asked for. Uh, I'm optimistic and hoping that the permit will be issued. I just don't have a direct timeline, uh, from DEP. Uh, I'm sure that the township can attest to the amount of emails that, uh, I'm trying to coordinate here to to keep this moving. In the midst of of the DP GP 11, uh, that is the the last, um, outside agency, uh, permit that we are waiting on. Uh, and then we can finalize the bid specification package, uh, to put the project out to bid uh, and and hopefully keep the intended timeline. Uh, because we were, we were looking at a nine-month construction project. And you'll see that it's on the agenda tonight, and what I would ask for later tonight is a conditional uh, authorization to advertise for bids, subject to receiving, uh, the necessary permits and to finalizing the bid package.
Okay.
Uh, and in the midst of this, I've been working with, uh, McMullen Associates, uh, to finalize, uh, and work on the bid package. And that, that is the last item that that I was looking to give an update on is this, in this part of the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. And really, um, just Kurt has put in such a tremendous effort over the past month. It is really, I mean, he's emailing over the weekend. He, he's, uh, I think he's like dreaming about it. It's, it's really, um, we're very grateful for the, you know, 100% effort. Anita. Yeah, actually, you know what, Anita? Can you save your comment for public comment or the agenda item that it relates to? We're not. Okay, we're not deliberating anything now?
I just have a question.
Okay, super fast, but I don't.
All right. This is a question from Tim Anita Nolan, uh, and the question came from Tim Cashman, who could not be here tonight. Um, he noticed on the DEP website that the, this permit is in technical review, and their target date is 7/1/25. How do you, like, why are we going to bid if there's four months, three months, whatever left?
Okay, thank you. Um.
You want me to answer?
No, so we're moving on to the Public Works Report. Um, is there any, I have reviewed the report, Judith, in my packet. Is there anything we want to highlight?
Just that we have had an exceptional winter with exceptional low temperatures and ice, and the Public Works Department has done everything in their power, uh, with placing as much material on the roadway systems, as you probably noticed, um, to mitigate the ice and so forth. So, um, they're, they're trying to get some of that cleaned up right now also. So in order to mitigate the ice, we need to use a lot of material, and and that's what we have done. So you will see cleanup shortly, but thank you all for your patience.
Yes, thank you. Um, next, we have our solicitor's report. Scott?
Yes, real quick, I have a follow-up item from our agenda last month. Uh, last month, uh, the board voted to send to me to review the, uh, a proposed lease agreement with Rise Up Towers. Uh, I've been in contact with their attorney and brought some of the concerns to them, and it seems like we can work out some of those concerns the board has expressed to me. But if there are other items you guys would like me to take a look at and review and request to them, I can do that as well. So if you want to shoot me an email or do that, but you know, some of the things we talked about was, you know, removal in the case that the company goes, uh, out of business or it not, doesn't get used anymore. Um, the other was related to, you know, citing and what companies could be on there. So I've gotten some responses and their, their responses from their attorney. And, you know, it's generally regards to the one being the first item, the more pressing issue from the township standpoint being they have in the past put up maintenance bonds in other places for such situations. So it's something they're willing to consider, but work with us on if we are to move forward with it.
Okay. Mike, would you be able to work with Scott and continue that, um, kind of search for?
Absolutely.
If we want to do this, if so, who do we want to work with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on to our consent agenda. So these are generally routine items. Um, number one is adoption of the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Minutes from February 4th, 2025. Number two is the Treasurers Report for January 2025. Number three, the Payroll Report for February of 2025 in the amount of $86,626.74. Number four is dispersments for February, um, from the General Fund in the amount of $58,067.20 from the State Fund, $34,232.52 from the Penn Community Bank Escrow Fund, $2,521.72 and from the Escrow Fund, $10,957.93. Um, the, we have a resolution in our consent agenda tonight, resolution number 9, 2025, making the designation of agent, uh, to appoint the Township Manager as designee to act on behalf of the Township to finalize the 2021 FEMA grant. Number six is consideration, uh, to approve participation in the annual mosquito control program and grant permission for the Bucks County Department of Health to treat municipal properties for the mosquito borne disease, uh, disease, for mosquito borne disease. Number seven, consideration of fire police assistance from the Delaware Valley Volunteer Fire Company for the Blaze of Glory 5K Run in Plumsteadville Township on Saturday, March 22nd, 2025, um, if they are available. And number eight, consideration of fire police assistance from the Delaware Valley Volunteer Fire Company for the Tinnicum Arts Festival on July 12th and 13th, 2025, on Saturday. And thirteenth, twenty twenty five. On Saturday, the hours are from ten A M to six P M and on Sunday, ten A M to five. P M again, if they are available. I will make a motion to. To approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any comment? Any discussion here? Any public comment? All in favor? For action items, number, uh, letter H. First up is the consideration to authorize the advertisement of the Headquarters Road Bridge Bid Package. Given that we are meeting one day a month. This action item tonight will allow us to advertise a bid package. Should the permit be issued prior to our next meeting, which I believe is on April first. The, the bid package is not yet finalized. And we of course wouldn't be advertising it until it is finalized. Kurt's recommendation to approve the conditional authorization to advertise the bid. Pending completion of all specifications.
Yes, conditional upon receiving required permits and satisfactory finalization of the bid packages.
Okay. I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor? Number two is relating to the functional classification of streets and that map. For Tinicum Township, the consideration is to send that to the Planning Commission for review. Kurt, did you want to just say a few words?
Yes, I, I think there was pointed out by a, a member of the Township Committee that potentially the map that was included with. With that section of the ordinance seemed to be, had some errors in it, was the wrong map. And there was an older map that was referenced that was almost illegible in certain cases. So we did our best to. To reproduce or regenerate what we feel is an updated and correct map. However, we wanted to submit that to the Planning Commission to have them review it further.
Okay, so I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor? Number three is. Consideration of the adoption of ordinance number two sixty nine, amending section seven oh six of the Tinicum Township zoning ordinance to create. A municipal government use. And this is something we've been working on for many months. We approved the advertisement of this ordinance. At our last meeting, it has been advertised. I will make a motion to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor? Number four is consideration to adopt ordinance number two, two seventy. Restricting truck and trailer traffic on Hollow Horn Road within Tinicum Township. This is another ordinance that's been under discussion for a while. We authorized the advertisement of it at the last meeting. It was advertised. Is there a motion to adopt that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor? Number five is consideration to adopt proposed ordinance number two seventy one. Which is the single use plastic bag relating to single use plastic bags. This was discussed. At the last meeting and prior meetings as well, that representatives of the E A C came and presented it, I think maybe at the November meeting. We authorized the advertisement of it with. We received public feedback at the last meeting. We deleted a provision that had been in the original draft. And with the deletion of that. Provision, we advertised the ordinance, which we authorized at the last meeting. So I'll make a motion to adopt the single use. Plastic bag ordinance.
Second it.
Any discussion? Any comment?
Real quick, you'll just notice in the title, just for people's identification, it says chapter X X X. That's just a placeholder because when we're going through the codification, once that's codified, E code will assign it the chapter number.
Okay, thank you for that Scott. All in favor? Number six is. Consideration to advertise proposed ordinance amending section eight oh nine of the Tinicum Township zoning ordinance. To permit only closed loop geothermal systems. Currently, we allow geothermal systems, but we don't, we allow open loop and closed loop. And this ordinance would going forward prohibit open loop systems and only allow closed loop systems. So I will make a motion to. To advertise. The amending section eight oh nine of our ordinance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor? Number seven is consideration to advertise proposed ordinance amending section two oh one of the Tinicum Township zoning ordinance. As amended to revise the definition of lot area and providing a definition for lot area within a qualifying improvement. Scott? Just to get a little context on this one.
Yeah, so this was something that has been going back. With, we had sent it, we had drafted it from a recommendation from the Planning Commission. We sent it back. They were just double checking to make sure everything was in there. You know, after a further review, there was still something missing that has been added. So everything based on their recommendations has been included for you. Cause that was the original plan. Everything is there now and it's good to move forward for advertisement and sending to the Bucks County Planning Commission.
Okay, so I will make a motion to advertise. Okay, any discussion? Any comment? All in favor? Number eight is consideration to advertise the proposed ordinance amending section nine hundred point three of the Tinicum Township zoning ordinance. As amended to revise the impervious area requirements for otherwise nonconforming lots. And making the lots conforming if they meet certain criteria. Scott, can you give context on this one?
Same thing. This was a recommendation from our Planning Commission. They've since reviewed the final draft and recommended the Board of Supervisors move forward with it.
Okay, I will make a motion to advertise supposed ordinance amending section nine hundred point zero three. Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor? Number nine is consideration of the request from Amy Hollander for a, a letter of support from Tinicum Township for America two hundred fifty. Heritage Day Grant Submission. Mike, do you have some information on?
Judith partially talked about this, but Amy Hollander from Bucks County Parks Department is forming a steering committee of people. Look at putting together a, a day, a festival day in the park for lack of a better term, whether she's going to have period music and. Dancing and food and et cetera, to celebrate Tinicum's place with regards to. The Revolutionary War and all the things that happened here in Tinicum. There are massive movements of troops and prisoners through our township. And many people know about Arthur Irwin, prominent member of our community at that time period, who sourced the boats for George Washington to cross the Delaware. Very famously, there is also a crossing from our hometown to Frenchtown as well. So Amy is looking to get a grant in order to put this event together. It's going to be a one day history fair that's going to take place in the park. It's going to involve children from our schools to hopefully teach them a little about, about our history and our heritage here in Tinicum.
Okay, and that would be in twenty twenty six.
Twenty six, May sixteen, twenty twenty six.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to write a letter of support from the township.
I'll second.
For this purpose. Any discussion? Any comment? Kathy?
Yeah, Catherine Arabon. Center Road. Can you just move that mic to you?
Yes, that, thank you for considering this event and the school district representative is very responsive. To involving the student pre, pre the event as well to help with some of the. Activities and presentations and a lot of it will involve. History and, and events and our contribution throughout the country. The request for the township support is to be included with a grant application. That is a grant that is for matching funds. So any indication by the township, I think Amy had provided you with some numbers. And a request depending on the size of the event, either a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. That may be in the two thousand twenty six fiscal year for the township. That, that would be part of the match. And to make the grant application, it's very difficult if you don't show any match. They won't, we won't get any money. And so there's no that alike. And this is, this is, we, we're important for the history of our country. So I would hope. That the township perhaps phrase this letter of support to indicate that. That there may be a consideration to help with some financial match as well. So that the grant, we have a better success with the grant. Otherwise. If we don't have matching, meet the match, then it's very difficult to get a grant to do it. And. That would be a shame because there's an awful lot to benefit from the event. So I just wanted to encourage you to consider suggesting at least a consideration. It's not a firm commitment. Again, it's really just to say, yes, it would be very interested and we want to support. And in a modest way towards the total number of, of contributions.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have? Do we have anything from any? With the specific.
We do have some asks, we do have some asks, but the problem with that was that we've already done our twenty twenty five budget. And we have yet to do a twenty twenty six budget, so we can't really appropriate funds in that. So we can't commit to giving funds to something that we don't have funds for.
What is the range though that she's?
She's looking for a thousand or two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you Kathy. So any further public comment? All in favor? Number ten is. Consideration of the planning module and authorization of section K for three horse farm at thirty eight Center Road. Tax map parcel number four four dash zero one five dash zero zero one. Scott?
So this is the most I have spent ever on a planning module or any involvement of any planning modules in my ten plus years as an attorney. Obviously, this was reviewed by the, this is planning module. I mean Kurt, you can probably speak to it better than I can, but the planning module is more of just the first step of the permitting process. And it's more of an administrative ministerial duty on part of the Planning Commission in Township. But.
And it's permitting for what?
Uh, sewage planning. So sanitary sewer systems, in this case on lot. Uh, on my way home from court this afternoon, I got a call from Bill Benner and then he sent me this email. They're looking to table it. Reading through the email, it's really, you know, he's trying to bring up a disconnect between our ordinance where our zoning ordinance has the. Uh, requirement that, you know, a principal dwelling and any accessory structure be on the same septic system. But our, our sewage management ordinance has the hierarchy for individual soup systems. And he's trying to say there's a disconnect there. I don't see it. These are more arguments for a, in my view, for a variance from that requirement. Under the zoning ordinance than dealing with the, the planning module. Again, this is more of a ministerial duty. You know, the Planning Commission signed off of, the issue is when the Planning Commission signed off on it, because of that, they're looking for a second system. It doesn't. Conform with our zoning ordinance requirements. And they're asking it, they're asking us now to table it.
And they're asking you to interpret it in an odd way to get the outcome that they're looking for, but it, it's opposite of what the ordinance actually.
Yeah, that's what I'm knowing is that, yeah, so. Go ahead. I mean. In, in my view, whatever the board thinks is easier is the action they should take, whether it's to just move forward with the proper vote and go through with the ministerial action. Or to table it and talk about this further. Just, I don't.
What is there to talk about?
Well, just to give, just to give a little more insight is within the component one planning module, they're adding a second system on the lot. The Plan Commission reviewed it and the Plan Commission indicated that it's not consistent with the zoning ordinance. So I believe that was how they had completed their module of the planning, of the planning module, that component. So this would be for the Board of Supervisors to execute. Their, their part of the module, which would, would pretty much include the Planning Commission's module that says it doesn't comply with zoning. And then that would get sent to D E P. As it was written. I, I mean, I think the township has a time period they're, they're obligated or expected to respond to these applications.
There's two issues at hand with this. First off is the first issue where we have two systems. Serving a, a primary dwelling and then an accessory. In this case, they indicated it wasn't a dwelling, it was a structure, but it's an R V. So it's not even really a dwelling. And she, or a structure. And she was asked whether she have a permit for it. She said she didn't need a permit because it's an R V and it doesn't require a permit. All kinds of issues with this thing as far as our ordinances go. And, and I say they can go for the variance and let the, let the zoning hearing board. Tell them what it's going to be. I mean, that's, that's my opinion on it.
Yeah, no, it's at the pleasure of the board if they want to table it or not, but you know, our recommendation would be, you know, talking with Kurt and talking with Judith and talking with Gary, the zoning officer. I mean, again, this is a ministerial duty, so it's already been done from the Planning Commission's side. You're just finalizing it from the Township's side. And again, these are sort of arguments for, in my view, and arguments for a variance for that. So if. You want to move forward with it, that's fine, but I'm just bringing to your attention that they asked us to table it.
So if we're not tabling it tonight, if we are dealing with it, what is our motion?
Your, your motion, your action would be to, you know, finalize, execute, sign the planning module. Subject to the limitations that, you know, the response of the Planning Commission that it doesn't currently conform to our zoning ordinance. What that does for them with D E P, I can't understand. I don't know. Again, I.
They'll still have to go through a permitting process for a septic system, which that point they're going to run into the. Into the zoning issue, which then will go before the zoning hearing board. They'll have to get a variance.
Correct, they'll still have to.
No, we're not approving, we're not approving anything. That's why I'm confused as to.
Moving on.
Yes.
And indicating that does not comply with the zoning ordinance. That way D P is aware, rather than the municipality holding it, not doing anything. And then the applicant then saying.
And when I said, you know, I've spent more time on this one than any other one. I meant all of my other planning, all other planning modules I've been involved with combined, which. Are hundreds, because I don't normally get involved in them.
Well, you've dealt with Bill Benner before, haven't you?
On occasion.
Okay.
So let's deal with this tonight. So I'll make a motion to execute the planning module subject to the. The notation that the proposed system is not in conformance with our zoning ordinance. Is that?
Correct. Yeah, the planning commissions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
And, and just to clarify, there's a box to check on the area that you're signing that says nonconforming to the zoning ordinance.
So that. We'll check that box. Yes, okay. Number eleven on our agenda is consideration of the subdivision application for four seventy nine Headquarters Road. Tax map parcel number four, four dash one, four dash sixty dash zero zero one. And I understand we are tabling this.
Yeah, that's what he was discussing earlier. Issues to address.
Okay. Moving on, number twelve is. Oh, consideration of the Board of Supervisors liaisons for Township Committee. So one of the things that. We did at the start of the year was designate who among us would be the liaison to which Township Committee. And John took most of them. So I think he's looking to.
Yeah, I'm not going to dump.
Spread that out a little bit.
Not dump it off. Well, I was wondering if, if Mike would be willing to just take the historic commissions, since he's on there already anyway. And maybe Parks and Rec.
Absolutely.
And that would, that would be. Okay, I don't really make a motion.
Do we need a motion?
No, you're not. This isn't any formal appointments. This is discussion on yourselves.
Let's just do that then.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Second round of public comment. Is there any?
Hi, Twendy. Back to the emergency response stuff. I would like to say thank you to you gentlemen that are still here and the ones that aren't here for your volunteering and trying to iron this out. I think one thing we have to look at as far as coverage areas. Point Pleasant may not be asking for money because they have more people on the southern side of them. And from standing back, listening to the conversation, it sounds like. And from standing back, listening to the conversation, it sounds like the more calls you run, the more money you get, or I'm not sure how that works. So I think Point Pleasant may be doing better because of the residents on the southern side of us.
Plumstead also gives them a ton of money.
Right, well, there's a lot more people and a lot more. So I think we just have to take that into consideration and you know, we want our cake and eat it too, so we have to try to work with what we have maybe and see if we can make it a better thing. That's all. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any additional public comment?
Jim Nelson, Springfield Township, treasurer for Ubrams. The one thing we have to emphasize and thank you Todd for making that mention. I heard John in expressing about call volumes. The reason why Ubrams is having this conversation and Ubrams is unique to Bucks County is that we have something that most of us that grew up in this community and lived this community our entire lives recognize. And that is that we are in a very rural area and it is an anomaly to southeastern Pennsylvania. We are the only school district which has consistently gotten smaller. There's some forces to that. But the reality is the graduating class of this year is considerably smaller than when I graduated from school in 1981. Okay, and it's consistently getting smaller. Yes, there are more options for parents. Homeschooling wasn't an option back in the eighties. But the needs for the community and ambulance service have been there. We were asked by Springfield Township back in 1998 to open up a second facility. And we were asked because of issues of response times. We know that other emergency services in the communities have gone under. Delval used to have an ambulance. I was transported as a teenager once by that ambulance. They don't exist anymore. Williams Township doesn't exist anymore. There's others south of us that don't exist anymore. What we're asking for is being able to fund preparedness, being able to respond. And to Todd's point, the more calls you have, the less dependence you have for having to support your system. We basically all have the same cost to operate a station. What I can tell you is that Ubrams salaries are lower than all the others surrounding municipalities, which causes an issue for us for staffing. We, if you look closely at our numbers, should take a look that our labor's changed. That's because during COVID, we were fighting against McDonald's. McDonald's was giving $2,500 bonus to sign on. And they were paying more per hour for their employees to flip burgers than an EMT to come in and it was helping to assist doing CPR. We increased our cost and labor by about 30%. And that was just to keep staff and to keep people from coming over. We are asking to get a sustainable model so that we can continue providing ambulance service and the two station model for the entire, and I can't emphasize this enough, the two station model, which no one else is willing to fight for that. The only people are willing to fight for that are the people that are living it. So I hear you about the cost involved with that. And I also hear, well, you're going to triple the amount of money. I take a look at everything that I've been paying for as a farmer, as a businessman and as a citizen. And I could tell you my cost since the eighties had better than tripled. I think we all know that by taking a look at our salaries. But the monies that we receive to operate have not tripled. And when you speak about Plumstead paying more money and you take a look at the other municipalities and what they're paying to keep the readiness, preparedness to have a full station up and running. Point Pleasant, Plumstead, they're fortunate, they do have more calls with one station. You take a look, we have two stations. So you have to take that in consideration and think about, I, I, we have a tendency to not always want to look outside the box. But whatever our opinions are, we have to step away from those opinions and take a look at everything that's being presented. As I'm throwing questions at me, I try to address them as best as possible. I watched a volley of conversations going between supervisors of the nine municipalities, some more active than others. Most certainly, you said, you know, well, we're asking hard questions. You're not the only township asking hard questions. We will be having a town hall, multiple town halls for the communities that we serve. We will be holding a town hall that will be inviting the different municipalities and there'll be targeted areas. And absolutely everyone's invited to those. When we have those, we'll let you know about them. So that you probably want to be part of them as just forget about your hat as a supervisor, but just being a concerned citizen in the community. We'd want you to be there to step away from being a supervisor for a moment and just being a person and being concerned about, you know, what it takes to get an ambulance here.
Do you know when they will be?
I don't have those dates yet, but I will be working on it. Our first and most important is to bring the supervisors up to speed and try to answer as many of those questions as we can to the supervisors. So they're not blindsided. You know, it's, we do not want you as supervisors to not have the information because people are going to come to you and they should be coming to you and asking those questions. And in turn, you're coming to us asking questions. We talked to a lot of people in the community. I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, I apologize for being late, but we had a fundraiser with Kimerton. And they raised $6,000. And that was just, you know, rounding up. I don't go there very often, but I went there twice just to kind of see what was going on. I go in there and I have a farm like Todd has. I raise my own beef. That's the last place in order I'm going to be buying beef. I buy, you know, I slaughter my own beef. I look at the prices in there, I smile. You know, it's like, I understand why I'm getting the good money I'm getting. I also sell eggs. And everyone knows what eggs are running for right now, and it's a temporary thing, temporary for about a year or two. But these are all costs of doing business. And when you word it that things are tripling, you also have to put that in context. Where we're tripling from nine dollars and change to going to $39. That's different than saying my taxes are tripling, which are currently, my property tax around eight, nine thousand dollars. If you told me my taxes were tripling, that would be saying $27,000. So yeah, it's, words are very powerful. Choose them carefully, choose them wisely. And I will try to answer any question you folks come up with, and I'm doing that times nine municipalities. I came up and I've been the longest as an officer on the board. And I created a slate of officers. And I selected Anthony and I selected John Alby to be a slate of officers because I saw that we needed a massive change. And I knew that that was the only way things were going to change. I've been watching on the backside and I knew that we had to approach this issue from a totally different angle. And Anthony most certainly has a different dynamic than we've had in the past. And as much as I like to change the past, I can't, but most certainly I can tell you that we've learned from things and we're constantly learning. So, and we're putting best practices forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Yeah Wendy? Do you want me to pause?
No.
Wendy Ulman, resident. This is a far less weighty manner than the, the Ubrams conundrum. But I just would like to thank the board of supervisors for passing the ordinance about plastic bag use. Environmental change, environmental improvement is always incremental. Small steps, sometimes infinitesimally small steps. But we look for a win where we find it in every plastic bag that isn't produced. That isn't then incinerated or thrown into the landscape to decompose and, and release microplastics. That's a win for the environment and, and I thank you.
Thanks Wendy.
Thanks Wendy.
Any further public comments?
Yeah. And I will take up where Wendy left off with this whole issue of microplastics. And now, of course, we're hearing about nanoplastics. In fact, they're finding nanoplastics in people's organs and particularly their brain. Scott, you're shaking your head. You saw that article? Yeah.
I didn't see the article, but I know what you're talking about.
Right, yeah. So we did have a, a committee a while back, I believe, 2022, when you first came on board. And I think you were, oh, I think you were actually the chair. And I think Marty Kaid was on it. Marty was doing the footwork in terms of getting sampling from our streams. Because there was some indication from the state report that was put together that one of our creeks that I believe it was the Tohican Creek had contamination. So the sampling that was done, I believe, was she was working with, well, you were on the committee, so you know. We were promised a report and that somehow died. Is, can, did that ever come to fruition?
The first report, it wasn't a state report, it was prepared by.
The one that Marty put together in terms of assessing the contamination in our, in our township.
Yeah, so the first report was prepared by Penn Future. It looked at 50 streams throughout Pennsylvania. And all of them contained microplastics. There are different forms or shapes of my, microplastics. The Tohican was tested, the water was sampled and they found filament, so fibers, microplastics in the form of fibers. So like fleeces that shed and that kind of thing. That was what was found in the Tohican. We did a sample of where were we? We sampled the other streams in this watershed around the Tinnicum Creek. And I personally hand delivered the samples in Center City to Penn Future. And we haven't heard anything.
Oh, so it's been a few years and.
That was in 20. I think it was at the end, towards the end of 21.
Okay, so nobody really followed up with that?
I think we did follow up. I'm not sure what happened on their end. They were doing a, an initiative encouraging kind of citizen scientists to go out and do these samples, sampling in accordance with a protocol that they published to kind of expand the reach of their research. So I think it's an issue on like organizationally on their end, that this wasn't carried through.
I hear you. The other question I have is in follow up to Anita coming up and asking the question on behalf of Tim Cashman. I don't know if that's allowed. Regarding the Headquarters Road Bridge project. I was wondering if we could get an answer. Kurt?
We did answer. The question was why would it be put out to bid if we don't have a permit?
Right.
And it was answered when we addressed it on the agenda item.
And he also had a question about the permit being listed as a certain date, which, which is standard protocol. I mean, they, they have a certain, DEP has a certain time period that they can list to provide a response. And if they don't respond by that time period, then then we can go after DEP, follow the regulations.
So the question I wanted to ask Kurt was when you had mentioned that they needed more information. And I'm assuming that you did get them that more information. What exactly was that information that they were requiring for them to, you know, follow through on it, so to speak?
They specifically in the meeting asked for they asked for riprap stabilization along part of the, the water course. Which was actually not part of the application. So I said, we, we could certainly add that to the plan. But if you're going to use that against us later on to say that now it's an adverse impact where it wasn't an adverse impact before, then I was not I indicated I was not willing to do that. So we added some additional riprap stabilization under the structure.
So it was the riprap? Yeah.
Yeah, and the way that it was specified, that I specified on my plan is I reduced the amount of the riprap stabilization to locally areas that were adjoining abutments and the piers.
And you don't have to be careful in terms of encroaching on the stream and, and.
Well, there's certain limits, there's certain limits within a general permit. And we're within the limits that you're allowed to disturb. And we had, since we now updated the plan, we needed clearances from all the other agencies on those, on that plan, which every agency has signed off on.
You mentioned that and that's terrific. I mean, so we're really postured in a good way to, to move forward.
Yeah, at this point, I, I'm not aware what, what the issue would be, but
Okay, thank you.
You never know.
With this bridge, you'd never know. Any further public comment? Yes Kathy?
Just to, to comment a little bit more on bridges. Thank you for following up a little bit with the free, Bridge 365.
I'll be commenting on that in a moment.
Road and a little disappointed that the county moved forward without full discussion and understanding or maybe plans in advance because these are historic resources within the wild and scenic. And the county among, and the township and the state and everybody else are signatories to the management plan for the wild and scenic which requests that everybody advise of, of actions in advance and that there's discussions and things like that. So I don't know if there's any changes that we can make at this point with their plans on that bridge. It's a shame because there's some damage being done that will take away from its character and historic value. But there's more bridges coming up and I would hope that the board make very clear to the county that you want to be involved very early on and and that they really take seriously the, the designations and the character of the area and importance of the bridges. And also if you feel so inclined to advise me in advance, include me in some of those discussions because I do have a lot of information on the bridges. So I appreciate that. And I also just caution on the idea of the cell tower. Which I think you briefly mentioned a little bit. Again, the airport range is around here and it's very dangerous to have any towers anywhere within the range of an airport. And as well as for the scenic and scenic vistas and things like that, so. If there's any other way to solve communication problems besides the cell tower, that would be great.
And I'll just say that no tower would go up in the airport district that isn't approved by the FAA under a, it's called a, you get a a determination of non-hazard, you get a letter from the, from the FAA indicating that the height in the location is safe. So it wouldn't go up without that if one were to go up.
Right, right. But again, just mind you that I did witness a fatal accident with an airplane wing being sheared off because of sort of foggy conditions and encountering a, a radio tower in Washington DC. So it's maybe even beyond the normal regulation, but since there's so much air traffic in this recreational planes and things.
Thank you Kathy. Any further public comment?
I just have a quick, one other clarification, sorry. On the, on the DEP comments and questions, another thing they're asking about is to reevaluate the needs of the abutments and piers. And which seems like they're, they're circling back. I mean, it's something that it's, it's obvious because it is a rehabilitation in kind that it should be permitted to put back what was already there. But the way that the regulations are worded, it lumps rehabilitation in kind with expansion projects and other projects to be applicable for GP 11. So I'm explaining these, these things and, and why we don't want to go back to alter the pier locations and change all that because then that would, it's basically a conundrum at that point because then it would be an adverse impact from the historic district standpoint and you shared that. So I just wanted to clarify that that was another, one of the concerns.
Yes. Judith?
And if I may, I would just like to thank.
We're almost done.
If I may, I would just like to thank Wendy and the EAC for their hard work that they did put into the plastic bag ordinance. Because it was really they who brought it to the board of supervisors' attention. And I know Wendy took the bull by the horns and really plowed forward with a lot of work with that. So I would like to thank you and, and the EAC.
That's great. Okay, supervisor comments?
I just had one thing here. I'd like to comment on the Beaver Run Bridge, Beaver Run Road Bridge number 365. On February 25th, Judith, myself and Roger from Public Works went out to a pre-construction meeting on site. The bridge had not been noted as a historic structure by the county and was not on the national register. So no comment, public comment was held with regards to this bridge. The existing metal pipes in the sidewall of the bridge no longer met the current standards for crash barriers. So new protective structures need to be erected as part of the work presently taking place. They will incorporate brown anodized guide rails so as not to be visually intrusive. Other work that will be undertaken is the repairs of the bridge deck, support structures underneath the bridge, patching of concrete and repointing of stone walls. The existing plaque will remain and a new plaque will be affixed with the information concerning the renovations also will be placed during renovations. The road will be closed for approximately three to four months. The detour information is located on the township website. While discussing this project with the county engineer, we discovered that three more bridges will be renovated within the coming years. Uh, most of them are only about thirty percent designed at this point in time. And those are Bridges number eighty-seven, three sixty-one, and thirty. Uh, we will be included in the public comment period for those bridges.
Which bridges are those?
I actually have to go and look at the inventory map to try to determine which bridges those are, but they're all, I believe, up at that end of the township.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Mike, John?
Um, yes, Connie Columbach, a longtime resident of the township is, uh, moving out of the township because, you know, she's older now. She's probably ninety years old at this point. And she's moving into an age-restricted community and she found these in her home, which are history books that were written by, she gave me the name, I forget now, Lynn Greening. And, um, these are, these show the history of the one-room schoolhouses that we have, we had in the township. There's four of them that we have. There are apparently more of these around somewhere. That one's Yular Town, there's Union Schoolhouse, Permanent School and Orwinus School and Sundale School are the ones that I have here. And I imagine there are some Quimby's mentioned in these books. So, so, um, you know, they're here right now. She gave them to me for, from, for safekeeping, but I don't know if my house is a safekeeping place. So we have, remember the Historic Commission right here. We have a township manager here. We should decide over the next, you know, few days, whatever, a few months, whatever, where we want to go with these books and and store them for safekeeping.
Has two, has two drawers over there.
Yeah.
Yes. And I know that, uh, I think Ethan would most likely like to see them.
Very much we'd like to. Um, so I thought we would have them available for him also.
Well, he's, one of them is what, is one he grew up in over there. Um, but firehouse, so you know, he.
Oh, yeah.
And I know he collects a lot of the.
I have a map. Uh, nineteen eighty-nine, there was thirteen one-room schoolhouses and things.
Well, I could generally spot them. I can spot them what, there's one, a, a typical example is one that's right on Oak Grove Road, Hollow Horn Road, whatever you want to call it there. It's right at the intersection of Oak Grove and, and Hollow Horn. There was Stone Road Part. That's one there. I think there's one at Cafferty and Giga Hill Road. I think there's one. There's, they're all over the place. When you see them, you can recognize them. Once you start to recognize it, they're, most of them look just like this. They're, they're, they're houses now. For the most part, they're, I mean, changed into homes. But, uh, this is a great piece of history for our township that was assembled. Uh, I, I don't know when she wrote them exactly. Never a chance to really look at them. I just picked them up yesterday from her house. And I will miss Connie in this, in this, in this township. At least I will. I, I mean, I've known her for the forty years that I've lived here. I've known her, uh, a member of our church and, uh, I see her almost every week. And it's been, uh, a great knowing her and her husband, George, who passed away last year. So he was like ninety years old, I guess, when he passed away. Um, so there's, there is some history for our township there for people to look at if they so desire.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's wonderful. Can we write a letter to Connie? Okay, perfect. Thanking her for, her donation. Um, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, very briefly, back to the Ubram situation. I, I believe that the service being provided is for an ambulance to be available when one is needed. You know, I, I don't think of it as a, a call volume kind of calculation. Um, I appreciate all of your board members and your members coming in, um, and meeting with us multiple times. Um, I, you know, I know that, you know, we're often in communication in between these meetings. Um, there is, you know, there's a lot of work that is, that this board is doing kind of individually. Um, to to figure out what the best path forward is for the residents of Tinicum. Um, and I appreciate the continued, um, effort to work with us to figure out what that is.
It's not, it's not just the residents of Tinicum. It's, as you said, it's a community of, of EMS services and townships that need to be, be serviced adequately. I understand that the costs are going up. I get that. I, I made that comment in the paper. I understand that we're probably going to pay more. It's a matter of how much. And Tinicum, the impact's gonna be a little bit greater because we have the two services. I, I, I don't know how we treat them fairly without raising up to almost three mils or maybe over three mils, our, our EMS um, tax burden. And that goes from a, a, a now point five mil. So that's the kind of increase that I'm a little frightened of. I mean, it's something that, that, you know, because we, we're gonna all have to pay for it for both services. And that's, for us, this is why it's a little more difficult for us. It's, it's a little bit harder. I know there are other places that have other services, but they don't have, I don't think the fifty-fifty split like we have. It's, uh, I know Springfield has a couple. They got pretty split, but I don't know what they're paying for whom. I'm, I have tough times to keep a track of Tinicum. So.
Lucky they have a hospital. Everyone's got a hospital.
Yeah, they got Grand View, is it?
No, uh, quicker time.
Okay, quicker time.
If you have a hospital in backyard, they're not paying.
Yeah.
There are a lot of municipalities surround us. They don't have to pay anything because they're covered one hundred percent by hospitals.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, just wanted to say that. I mean, I, I, I have nothing about the service that I think is poor. The service is fantastic from Ubrams as it is from Point Pleasant. Always dedicated staff on both of those, those, those units. And I don't want to see anything happen to either one of them. But as Alfred said, we also have to look out for our township residents. The tough balance, tough choice. That's why we spend so much time on it. I basically spent all day on this today. So.
Yeah.
Judith? So I apologize. I've taken a lot of time with announcements, but this is a very important one. We just had received this information. Point Pleasant Baptist Church is having a blood drive at Fellowship Hall on thirty-five River Road in Point Pleasant. It's Thursday, April third, twenty twenty-five, from two PM to seven PM. I would encourage anyone that's interested in donating blood to please, please, please look on our website. We also have copies of these in the back. Um, they have sent an email asking us to please send this information to friends, neighbors, relatives, and so forth. So thank you for allowing me to bring that up.
Thank you, Judith. Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Good night. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Yeah, smoking, are you smoking or farting?
I smelled it. I said, you're gonna need the A D over there, not care. Are you smoking too? All right. I don't either. I don't know.
Well, I didn't hear you say.